All right, why don't we go ahead and call this meeting to order? And I'd like to invite Sonia Sanchez Bravo, who's volunteered to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So Sonia, why don't you come up to the microphone if you're there? Let's give her all a round of applause.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and members of the public. My name is Sonia Bravo Sanchez. At this time, I would like to invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the Nigel States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and why don't we all remain standing? Can I have our police chapman Rupert Vega come and join us for the invocation?
If you could please bow your heads. Gracious heavenly Father, we come before you today, giving you honor, glory, and praise. Lord, you are the source of all that is good, and we are grateful for all the blessings that you've bestowed upon us. We thank you for our wonderful city of Santa Ana, our honorable mayor, city council, chief of police, and staff. We thank you for our freedom and the opportunity to come and gather together this day. We ask for your hand of blessing to be upon tonight's meeting and proceedings, and we thank you for your unending love and wisdom. We ask you that you would guide and direct our meeting tonight. Let it be of sound wisdom, and let it be productive and with respect towards one another. Thank you, Lord, for helping us accomplish our work and our goals this day. In Jesus' name, amen.
Can all be seated. I'd like to invite Councilmember Benavides to the podium. I believe he has a presentation. Yes, can I have Jeanette Mendoza from Cutzy Restaurant, if she can join us up here? This is for the grand opening in celebration of the Mexican art, culture, and food restaurant. I see somebody familiar coming up as well, so welcome.
Well, I have here to my right Jeanette Mendoza, who is the owner of Cutzy Restaurant here in our historic Santora building. And some of you might remember that up until last year, I believe, we had a restaurant there, Memphis Restaurant, for quite some time. The number of years ago, the city invested and partnered up to be able to draw in a restaurant, a nice restaurant, to be able to contribute to what we see today, which is downtown, that is very active, very vibrant. And so I know when Memphis closed, there was a lot of question and concern from some of us in the city that had come to enjoy a restaurant destination there at the historic Santora. And then for some time, the windows were covered up, and there was a lot of inquiry and kind of just curiosity as to what was to come there in that new space. And I've had the opportunity on a few occasions to visit what is now there, which is Cutzy Restaurant. Cutzy Restaurant is a restaurant that brings some of the finest of Mexican cuisine here to our own Santana. Santana is a city that's quite diverse. A lot of, the majority of our population now is Latino. A lot of us from originally families, originally from Mexico. But one of the things that we've been really looking for, and I know myself, family, friends, is a restaurant that would be able to bring some of the diverse dishes that we find throughout the different regions of Mexico. And that's precisely what we have in Cutzy. The owner here to my right, Jeanette, is obviously a woman, woman owner, so owner, which is another great thing, is to be able to see the entrepreneurial spirit and a woman taking the lead there and bringing this great new place of fine cuisine to our city. She's from the state of, from Uruguayan Mexico. Cutzy opened up a few months ago, but will be celebrating a grand opening in the month of September to be lined up with the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. As I've mentioned, the restaurant brings some of the finest of Mexican cuisine and dining here to our own artist village in the Santora. Also, in addition to bringing some of the different culinary delights from throughout Mexico, there's a variation of art and music and culture that you can also experience there at Cutzy. So I want to encourage folks to come out. One of the other things, in addition to the dishes and the food, the excellent food, and the ambiance as well, is they have some of the finest mezcal and tequila. I've had an opportunity to, on a couple of occasions, have just one or two drinks, not many more than that. But at least I don't, I'll keep it at publicly saying that it's been only one or two. But it's been also actually one of the greatest dreams that I've been able to enjoy. So before making the presentation officially of the certificate of recognition, we always like to be able to highlight when we have folks that are making investment in our city, that are bringing something, creating more of a place of destination, a place of culture, a place of celebration in Santana. On a few occasions, I've had the privilege of bringing forth some of those entrepreneurs, restaurateurs, and other businesses. So it's an opportunity that we have here to be able to highlight and encourage folks to come out and benefit from some of the cuisine that's coming into our city. Before I make that presentation or present the certificate of recognition, I'd like to give Jeanette, or maybe a representative here, and Mr. Friend and former colleague Bustamante, an opportunity to speak. Jeanette, would you like to say a couple words?
Well, first of all, thank you so much, Councilwoman Benavides. I want to thank the city council and everybody that has given me the opportunity to make the restaurant, and excuse my English, I'm still learning the language, make the restaurant a destination and represent a little bit of what Mexico really is. And it's much more than just tacos and burritos. It's really what Mexico is today, which is modern Mexican cuisine, and it's all focused in culture. So I really want to appreciate everybody and all the people that has been going, you know, trying out the food. So thank you very much. And of course, Carlos Bustamante, if it wasn't for him, I would not be here today. Plus, he's also my personal translator.
So thank you, Jeanette. You know, one of the things that I do remember hearing when I heard about this concept, this idea of Mexican restaurant coming in, my family originally is from the state of Sinaloa, from my mother's side, my father's side, the state of Hidalgo. A number of years back, I had an opportunity to go and spend some time both visiting both my families from both of those regions. And I had also an opportunity to visit several other, it was an extended period of time. I remember as a child only going back to those specific two locations. But during this extended visit to Mexico, I had an opportunity to go to Morelia in Michoacán, to Cuernavaca, Morelos, to the Distrito Federal, Mexico City, and several other cities in between. And it was just one of the things, it was just wonderful to be able to see all of the different regions of Mexico and the different foods as well, and the different even cultures within our culture. So that's, so when I heard that there was going to be this restaurant coming in, and one of the neat things as well is somebody from Mexico coming in directly from the country to be able to invest and bring that, some of that cuisine to life. It was something that was very, something very exciting and positive, and I've enjoyed again a number of different dishes and drinks there. And so I'm excited that Cutzy's here, and so as we are as a city. So Jeanette, on behalf of the city council, I'd like to present you this certificate of recognition, recognizing your grand opening of Cutzy Restaurant. I want to thank you for your service and commitment to the city of Santana. Thank you, felices. And just a greeting to my friend here, Carlos, man of multiple trades and different types of backgrounds and experiences. And one of those is restaurant tours as well, and consulting and supporting Cutzy and other businesses here in town. So great to see you and good to have you back in the house here.
Thank you, council member. And why don't we get started with the next one? That's Councilmember Martinez. But I'd like to invite the Consul Mario Cuevas, the consul general from Mexico, to come join us. And I'd like to invite my colleagues to come and join in on this important recognition.
As my colleagues approach, and I rarely speak Spanish, pero es un placer y un honor estar aquí ahora y también tener el consejo de México. It's an honor and a pleasure to welcome our new consul general from Mexico, Mario Cuevas. And as he approaches, and our colleagues, unfortunately, Councilwoman Dinajero and our mayor, our mayor, Polito, are unable to be here. As you all know, we've had many consuls of Mexico. I know in my time, I have gone through, I think now this is, Mario is our fifth in my nine years here on the city council. And, you know, before I do read some of his information, I actually, since, you know, I do like to follow protocol. Today, we do have, you know, our mayor present, which essentially becomes our mayor, and that's Mayor Pro Tem Sarmiento. So Mayor Pro Tem Sarmiento, if you would like to start the conversation, and then I'll go ahead and chime in. I just think it's the diplomatic way as we welcome Mr. Cuevas.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate you making this presentation. I think it's very important. I had the opportunity to go welcome the new consul general here from Mexico at the new consulate's office on Fourth Street. And if you haven't visited, it's a beautiful, beautiful site. I know that the consul's old site was exactly that. It was older, and it was smaller, and it was very difficult because they service so many thousands of people here, really, because it's a regional office for the entire county, but it's here in our city. So it's a very important place. They provide great resources, great services. They've got a great staff. And I think we, yeah, we have gone through about four or five consulates, and we've been blessed to have such a great relationship over the years. And I'm going to shift to Spanish just to make sure that, I know the consul is very familiar with English, but I wanted to do it for some of the folks who are at home, who also are paying attention to this. And le quiero dar la bienvenida, señor Cuevas, aquí a su casa. That's a good applause. De parte de mis colegas y yo ya sabe que les recibimos con brazos abiertos aquí a su casa y esperamos que tengamos los mismos enlaces, la misma amistad que tuvimos con los cónsules que vinieron antes. Pero de parte de nosotros, más que nada, queremos darle la bienvenida aquí. Yo le agradezco a mi colega por hacer esta invitación, pero es de parte de todos nosotros aquí. Y más que nada, todos los residentes aquí de Santana, que tienen un lugar muy muy caluroso en el corazón por toda la ayuda y los servicios que hace, admílas de personas aquí en el condado. Y espero que su tiempo aquí con nosotros en Santana sea a su agrado, pues le vamos a tratar de colaborar en lo que podamos y que sea esto algo muy bonito. Entonces, le quiero dar aquí otra vez el micrófono a mi colega, y otra vez, de parte de nosotros, bienvenidos a todos.
Pues me da mucho gusto conocerlo y darle la bienvenida, señor Cuevas. Estamos aquí en la ciudad. Queremos darle la bienvenida y esperamos agradecerle de antemano todos los servicios que ofrecen a nuestra comunidad. I just want to join in in welcoming our new consul, council from Mexico, and I'm looking forward to working with you. And I'd like to thank you ahead of time for all the services your office will be providing to our residents. Thank you.
Vamos un comentario breve, señor Cuevas. De nuevo, una calurosa bienvenida. A comentar anteriormente, la familia de Pachuca Hidalgo, de Sinaloa, de Culiacán, Sinaloa, y toda la mayoría de la familia está por allá todavía. Me siento muy cerca, pegado a lo que es México, patria de mis padres, y se puede decir propia también. Y una de nuevo, calurosa bienvenida. Sabemos que las oficinas proveen muchos recursos para las familias en esta ciudad que necesitan, ocupan ese tipo de apoyo. Puedes sentirse saber que nosotros también como ciudad vamos a seguir apoyando. Just a warm welcome, express that my family, ranging from Mexico, from the state of Hidalgo and Sinaloa, as I mentioned previously, grateful for the services, as my colleague mentioned. Many services that our families here in the city benefit from, and will continue to be a strong partner here as a city as well to your office. Thank you again. Welcome.
All right. Bienvenidos, gracias por estar aquí de Santana. Sabes que nos tenemos mucho trabajar para hacer, y nadie puede hacer solo. I just want to say thank you for being here. I'm a true believer that it takes a community to raise a family and the additional resources that they bring to the table that we're able to work together and makes a change for our people. Muchísimas gracias por estar aquí.
Señor Cuevas, that was all the Spanish I could give you earlier, so now we're going straight to English. But when I do get the opportunity to speak Spanish, I certainly do, because I love the language. But, you know, this is a very distinguished gentleman, very distinguished. So he's born in Mexico City. Council Cueva holds a bachelor's degree in international relations from the National Autonomous University of Mexico. He also earned a master's degree in diplomatic studies from the Diplomatic Academy of Ministry of Foreign Affairs. For the past 35 years, Consul Cueva has held numerous positions in the public sector of Mexico, including international affairs sections, ministries of labor, planning and budget, communications, transportation, and foreign affairs. He has also worked for the Ministry of Foreign Affairs since 1981, where he worked for the Office of Foreign Ministry Chief of Staff for the bureaus of technical and scientific cooperation within Latin America and the Caribbean. As a 25-year member of Mexico's foreign service, he has also held posts in permanent in the Mission of Mexico, the United Nations, under other international organizations, Geneva, Switzerland. Was deputy commissioner of Mexico from 1986 of the World Exposition in Vancouver. Was deputy commissioner of Mexico, no, director of the Mexican Pavilion in Montreal, Canada. Also served as the deputy permanent representative for the International Civil Aviation Organization at the Mexican consulate. Furthermore, you know, he was a Mexican consulate in San Diego, New York. And, you know, now we have him here in the city of Santana. As I told you, this man is very distinguished. We're very fortunate to have him coming from a big city like New York to now coming here to the city of Santana. But, you know, Consul Cueva doesn't only represent, you know, Santa Ana. He's here in the city of Santana, but he represents, you know, every, you know, Mexican that comes from here, from Orange County. And so, you know, I know we've had, he's had some great welcomes from Mayor Tate from Anaheim and other mayors, you know, across Orange County. And we're very fortunate to have Consul Cueva here with him. I look forward to working with him. I know our city manager and our staff and our police chief look forward to working very closely with him. We've always, as Mayor Pro Tem Sarmiento says, we've always had a very close relationship with our consul generals, whether it be from Mexico or elsewhere. And now in my new role, I actually have relationships with the consul general of Israel, the general counsel of Canada. And so, you know, it's a great time to be working with folks like this, you know, here in Santa Ana and the opportunities that we have. And with that being said, señor Consul, if you could please join me up here, he's very shy, and just share a couple of words. You know, I know you've just, literally just got here on June 12th. You know, prior to that, we had Alejandra Williams, and we certainly wished her a very goodbye. But again, you know, as we do have, you know, new relationships and new opportunities, wanted to bring our consul here today so that our residents understand that we as a city council have a relationship with him and hoping, but he's going to say today that his doors are open, you know, on Fourth Street. And I know we're always welcome, but he's certainly going to want to welcome you to his new home. And with that, Consul?
Thank you very much. Muchas gracias, council member, muchas gracias. Thank you very much, council members. I'm so honored to be here. I'm really flattered. It's a very special occasion for me. It's going to be a memorable day, historical day for me in my journey. It's been a long time that I've been working with the public sector, but this is a very special occasion for me. And what I can say now is that I'm very, very honored to be here. And we're here to help. We represent the Mexican government. We help the Mexican nationals here. The consulate of Mexico has been here in Santana since 1987. Actually, one of the founders, Colis, is here. And we're so pleased to be here. And when you say New York, yes, I just running out from the cold. So this is a very good time, very good place, the right time. And as you know, you probably know that Santana is the most Mexican city abroad, out of Mexico, in terms of demographics. There's a very high percentage of Mexicans origin, or Mexican living here, is in Santa, in terms of concentration of population. So it's a very great honor and pleasure to be here. And we have, as council members said, we have a wide scope of activities and labor, different activities we develop for the Mexican nationals, starting from a simple location of a family member, a relative, to the transfer of remains to Mexico when one of our beloved passed away. So this is, we visit hospitals, jails, detention, and criminal centers. We try to provide all this help, legal assistance. We cannot represent them by ourselves, but we have a panel of consulting attorneys that can provide legal assistance to people in different areas, like family law, labor, criminal law, immigration. So it's a very huge and very important activity we have in the consulates. Let me tell you that we have 50 Mexican consulates across the United States. This is the largest consulate network of one country accredited in another country. So there's no comparison in any other countries. So this is another thing. That doesn't mean we have one in each state. We have only 10 in California, and we have 11 in Texas. That depends on the concentration of the population. So it's very, very rewarding to have this kind of support to the Mexican nationals. We help them in their relationship with the local authorities, with the federal authorities, and the state authorities. We understand, and we do respect the legal framework. So we are very respectful with the consulate diplomacy, and it's a real honor for me to be here. So I think it's very important. I'm really humbled in this recognition, honestly. It's all overwhelmed with this welcoming. I will never forget it. And all my channel, as long as I stay here, I'm going to work with my commitment, my professional staff working, and we're committed to provide the best services to the Mexican nationals and also to the foreigners, if they go to get a visa to Mexico. You're more than welcome, not only to the consulate with the new facilities, but to Mexico as well. So one thought.
Certificate of recognition. So on behalf of our mayor and wonderful city council and our city staff, we'd like to provide you this certificate of recognition awarded to Consul Mario Cuevas in recognition of your new appointment as Consul of Mexico in Santana, dated the 4th of August. And then the whole group, yep, get in the letter. In the middle?
Thank you very much. Just a few words, because I have a very pleasant assignment from the Mexican Embassy in Washington. It's for me a great pleasure and honor to convey this letter of congratulations to Councilmember Michelle Martinez, which reads as follows. There was a coincidence, let me tell you, because I received this letter a few weeks ago, and I just tried to get a hold, but I was out of town. Dear Mrs. Martinez, I would like to express my congratulations on your election as president of the Board of Directors of the National Association of Latino Elected and Appointed Officials, Naleo. Your new position is proof of your commitment to the development of Latino leaders and to fostering civic engagement within this community. Your passion for public service, as well as your experience in government, will contribute to the success of Naleo's mission. Naleo's work has made invaluable contributions to the social well-being and empowerment of the immigrant and Hispanic communities in the United States. I am confident that your leadership will add to this work and will continue to facilitate the full participation of Latinos in the political process, from citizenship to public service. I highly value the positive relationship Naleo has with the Embassy of Mexico. I hope to strengthen our ties in the upcoming year in order to continue our collaboration. I look forward to continuing working together in support of the Mexican and Hispanic communities in this country, and wish you the best of luck in this new position. Ambassador of Mexico in Washington.
Well, I'm honored. Thank you very much. Thank you. Gracias. Now, if I could please have Nick Alvidrez, please join me, Nick. I know this award is overdue, Nick. It's been quite a while, so I'm going to, please, please join me around here. As Nick comes up, you know, today we're recognizing him for his unselfish contributions and positive influence to the youth in Santana, specifically in the Logan neighborhood. I have not had the pleasure to meet Nick, so it's an honor, pleasure to meet you. And so let me share a couple of things about Nick, and some folks asked me to really recognize him. And I think many of you all know, here in the audience and at home, what we like to do is really honor, you know, some of those folks. You know, typically, we do have some, you know, whether it be youth or, you know, or parents or business people that we come up and honor. But rarely do we get emails from constituents that want to honor, you know, one of their fellow, you know, folks that does work within their neighborhood, that they've actually seen drastic changes. And so it's rewarding when I do get those emails that somebody is actually recognizing and paying attention, that it's just not coming from a city council member, or mayor, or staff, or we're reading something in the newspaper, and we want to recognize someone. It's actually coming from a fellow resident and others that really see that somebody's actually making a big contribution within our community. So with that being said, over the years, Nick has contributed to the development of growth of group of individuals in the Logan neighborhood. As a result, many of the children he's mentored have grown up to become high school graduates, college graduates, and most importantly, you know, productive members of the Santana community. Nick has coordinated a handball club at Chepas Park every Thursday. And certainly, we all know, if you live in the Logan neighborhood, we always got problems with the handball court. And I'll be the one of the first to admit that, you know. But, and he's laughing at it, because it's been very controversial over the years, certainly in my nine years. But certainly, handball is something very special, not just in this community, but across the United States. Sometimes a lot of folks don't realize that young kids could actually go on scholarships from playing handball. And I certainly didn't realize that a couple of years ago, when I was doing some research, and that kids that really have a passion for handball, I have a passion for basketball. I received a partial scholarship to play for New Mexico State. And so certainly, there are scholarships available for young kids that have a passion for handball. And with that being said, you know, he's been a tremendous mentor, and has really provided these kids a safe haven and really kept them away from drugs and gang violence in that neighborhood. Nick has, again... Nick has, again, has really held numerous large tournaments for the youth in Orange County, not just here in Santa Ana, and has really dedicated his time in assuring that, one, the handball court, and, you know, folks that are being supportive of these tournaments, that they're there and providing good direction for these kids and free of charge. Nick grew up in Santa Ana, and he knows firsthand how difficult it is for teens to grow up in an environment where there is uncertainty for the future. Actions have influenced his life, as many other at-risk teens. He has left really a very important, you know, footprint in the Logan neighborhood. And, you know, I have to tell you, you know, when I moved to Santa Ana in 19, I think it was 1990 from Los Angeles, I grew up in the projects, Harbor City. So if you're familiar with Los Angeles, I grew up in the projects. Those projects don't exist anymore. But when I came to Santa Ana, I really thought, I was like, wow, this is Disneyland compared to what I grew up in, you know, in very high-concentrated projects, lots of gang violence and drug activity in that part of Valle where I grew up. And, you know, coming here and realizing that Logan was a very historic neighborhood, was also a neighborhood that, you know, is one of the first neighborhoods in Santa Ana and in Orange County. And to have folks like himself and others that have dedicated themselves to the Logan neighborhood, to the young people, wanting to make sure that these kids are able to get out of a neighborhood, and are able to be productive members of society, I could only tell you and thank you for stepping up and willing to pay it forward. Because when we talk about, you know, us as elected officials, sometimes, you know, you know, it's not always easy, but we do what we do because we want to serve, you know, a greater good. This gentleman is serving a greater good because he wants to make sure that those young children in that neighborhood actually have a much better life than he had and prior generations before that. And so on behalf of our mayor and city council, certainly, our mayor is not here today, Nick, but on behalf of the entire mayor and city council, we want to provide you this small token of appreciation, recognizing you for your dedication and your service and commitment to the Logan neighborhood, and for all you've done all over the years. So, thank you very much. You'd like to say a couple of comments. Nick, yep?
I just like to thank Parks and Recreation. They did a lot of help. They have wonderful staff, especially when it comes to kids. They have really good employees. I had good luck with them, and I'd like to thank Parks and Recreation. I also like to thank the United States Handball Association, Mr. Gary Cruz. He's the Youth Development Coordinator, and he runs a tough shift, and we try to teach him some rules, and how to do it in school, and not just handball. So I was lucky to know all these people. They helped me. And we did a lot of tournaments with the kids, and we always try to teach them how to be a good sport. And, well, we had many, many, many tournaments in those 10 years of service that I did. And I'd like to also thank my wife for always helping me cook hot dogs and good punch, and she was always there helping with the kids. Thank you very much.
We can have Councilmember Reyna join us up at the podium, and invite the volunteers for the Santa Ana 4th of July event up here as well. Please come forward and join us.
Evening, everyone, and welcome back to a regular staff meeting, a regular council meeting. I missed the last one, unfortunately. I had some family obligations, and within that, I ended up missing our 4th of July, which is kind of near and dear to my heart, so I was saddened that I wasn't there. At the same time, not sure how your summer has been, but imagine high school students, junior high students, and college students home for the summer, with nothing better to do but to volunteer to help out for 4th of July, for a two-day event. Friday, I believe it was for six hours. Saturday, the day of the event, 4th of July, I take that back, for 4th of July, they were actually there for 14 hours. We had 25 students willing to donate and to give back. Leadership by example. I think that is absolutely huge, where traditionally, most kids are out there swimming at the pool or at the beach, or playing at the park, and doing whatever other activities young people do, that the group of people behind me, really dedicated to servitude and leadership of our community and taking ownership, dedicated over 24 hours to give back to the community on the very best day out there, which is the birth of our nation. So real briefly, we all know that the 4th of July event is held on an annual basis now. We have about 5,000 people that participate, and this is mostly done through our staff and a lot of volunteer work. The volunteers behind us did a lot of prep work and preparing for the event, preparing for the decorations on the stage, meticulously handing, doing the balloons so the decorations are just perfect. Fingers were hurting, and they did it con gusto. They were there just happy as heck to be there and to give back, and to really have a value of what they were doing. And this was all really facilitated in partnership with the Youth and Government Program, along with Connected Council, and Joanne McCall is in the audience, and I want to thank her for taking the great leadership and including the young people. We always say our young people should be included, but not everybody always follows through with that. And for you to be able to lead in that direction speaks volumes of yourself and in the community of embracing our young people. At this moment, I want to pass it on over to our delegation president and allow him to say a few words.
My name is Alfredo Blanca. I'm a junior, I'm a senior, sorry, entering high school now, and I'm the president of the Santa Ana Youth and Government. So just a little about what we do. I like to call us a youth leadership program. So we like to open up opportunities for our delegates to go out into the community and really exercise those leadership skills. So go out and not only like just sit there and direct people through traffic, but get out there and really do something, and learn, and grow from the experience. Yeah, I feel like, sorry, I feel like a large problem we as teenagers have is a lot of times we have too much time on our hands. And so unfortunately, many of our, many of our students find something counterproductive to do with that. So what we do with the Santa Ana Youth and Government is we give our students events where we can go and use our time to contribute to the community. And what a better way to do it, again, on the birth of our nation, the 4th of July, and benefiting the city of Santa Ana. That's it. Thank you.
Let's hear from one more of the leadership. Judith.
Hello, everybody. My name is Judith Correa, and like they call me in Youth and Government, I'm a rookie. So this is my first year doing it, and I actually came back from a program, and then the next day was 4th of July, so I didn't get to help out on Friday. But the 4th of July was hectic. We were working long hours, and we were smiling, but I think it was because it hurt so much to tie the balloons. But apart from just being, you know, a leadership program, we also give opportunities like the 4th of July to really inspire our youth to find opportunities to help out back to the community. Most of the things that we do is we start with talking to each other to kind of learn from what we know, and then kind of expand on our knowledge together. So we grow as a group, and that's really important. Thank you.
You know, phenomenal kids, and great things can happen when you give them opportunities. And as funny as this sounds, I tell my young people a lot of things, and one of the things I tell them is, I encourage you to fail, that I want you to fail. And they look at me, and they're like, excuse me, you're an adult, you're not supposed to tell us that. And I go, the more you're failing, the more you're trying. The more you're trying, the more we can do our part to help you get you where you want to be. But if the young people aren't willing to try, there's very little that we can do. And the people behind me, believe me, they try frequently and as often as possible. So it's my pleasure right now to, Mr. President, step on up here, in recognition, the city of Santa Ana recognition, to the Santa Ana Youth and Government, appreciation of outstanding dedication for the 4th of July event. We want to thank you for your time and your energy and your passion to our community. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you to all the recipients. Okay, moving along to the next agenda item. Madam Assistant City Attorney, do you have anything to report out of closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protam Sarmiento, council members, and members of the public. In closed session, the city agreed to settle outstanding fees of $26,586 due under a site license agreement with A White and Yellow Cab Inc. for a taxi stand at the Santa Ana Regional Transit Center for $12,500. The vote was 5-0 in favor. Mayor Palito and Councilwoman Tinnahera were absent.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move along to the public comment section of the meeting, and these are for comments that are on consent calendar items and regular business items. And let me begin by calling on Aaron Pelusa, and if we can have John Wesson ready to speak as well. So Aaron, if you'll join us at the podium. The floor is yours, sir. Go ahead and pull up that mic, not that one, the other one. Pull that one up close so we can all hear you.
Hi, my name is Aaron Peluso. I'm here representing the owners of the Bali High Mobile Home Park. We share an approximate 600-foot border, or 600-foot property line, with the subject property at 520 Harbor Boulevard. Additionally, I'm representing several tenants in the audience with us tonight who have concerns about this development. There's been a problem with notice regarding the Planning Commission meetings, Planning Commission meeting and Sunshine Provision meeting that took place back in November. As property owners or mobile park organizers here, we have received no written notice for either the November meeting or the meeting that happened just back in June. As a result, we didn't hear about any of these plans before they were already approved by the Planning Commission. So the only opportunity that we have to address this issue at all is here at the council meeting tonight. So I apologize for dragging you through it. We do have some concerns about the proposal. As best we can tell, the November 2014 Sunshine, Sunshine meeting was to review a different mixed-use project than this development project, and they are just applying that Sunshine meeting forward to this one. The agenda item and the staff analysis says that the project fits within all applicable zoning codes. We take a difference of opinion with that. In fact, Ollie, who's the listed contact on the Planning Commission agenda, confirmed that the setback from the street was more than eight feet, which is outside the zoning criteria. However, of course, our main concern is on our 600-foot property line. We have mobile homes that are three feet back from that property line on the other side, and this proposal proposes building homes five feet on the other side. So people would have 30-foot structures, three-story structures, eight feet from their rear window. And that is outside, in my view at least, that is outside of what the zoning code allows for. It's supposed to be no less than 15 feet when adjacent single-family residential. Obviously, five feet is lower than that, and it can go upwards from there. The reason why city staff is saying that the five feet fits within zoning code is they've made the determination without justification, as best that I can tell, that the adjacent property is a multi-tenant use and not single-family residential. However, when I've gone and looked, I've looked up from the American Planning Association, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, they all state guidelines for mobile home parks should be similar in regards to setbacks as for single-family residential. In fact, this property before November 2014, when the new zoning code was implemented, was zoned specifically as single-family residential.
Thank you, Mr. Pelusa. John Wesson, please.
Not quite that tall. Mayor Protam and council members, I'm on the same subject. I operate that park. I've been there for 45 years. Biggest problem we've got is how close you are to our backyard, really. It's an easy cure for it. The entrance to this whole property is on the south side of the property. If you put the entrance on the north side of the property, that's next to our fence, you've moved the buildings away from us. Whether you've got a driveway here or a driveway here, really no difference as far as the property being developed, except that it moves a three-story building, the distance of your street and everything, away from my residence. We've got 11 coaches that sit right against that wall, and you're going to have a three-story building like that. And just by moving the street from the south part of the property to the north part of the property, it moves the buildings back. You've got the same access, same problem with fire trucks, which you have anyhow, but you've got the same problems and the same benefits, except we gained the clearance to get the people away from our backyards. Three feet from our property line is our bedrooms. Five feet from that is a three-story building with people living in it. And all we ask is to have the streets moved on the other side, on the north side of the property, giving us the clearance that we need to actually abide by the code. The code allows for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson and Mr. Peluso. I see the applicant in the audience, and if you want to raise your hand, Todd, maybe you all can kind of convene and talk a little bit in the back, and I know our planning director is here as well. So I'll direct you to both of those good gentlemen. Maria Reyna, followed by Alicia Rojas. So those of you who haven't joined us before, if you haven't filled out a request to speak form, it's a green sheet. You'll have three minutes to speak, and as the light turns red is when your time expires. So when it turns green, go ahead and start talking. The floor is yours, Ms. Reyna.
Greetings, the mayor is Maria Reyna. I'm a local artist and recipient of the Artist Grant Program that recently Santa Ana has offered. First of all, I would like to express my appreciation. I am truly honored and grateful for this grant opportunity. However, my proposal was for $5,000 and to offer one year of free art at the Art Walk. And I noticed that it was changed to two years on this form here. At this time, I cannot agree to two years, and I'm not in agreement with that change. In my proposal, I did not include an artist fee and many miscellaneous items such as parking, et cetera. So I'm not in agreement with two years.
Thank you, Ms. Reyna. And I know that our Parks and Rec Director is here. He'll probably go ahead and approach you and see if we can go ahead and make those changes if possible. Alicia Rojas.
Buenas noches, good evening. We just wanted to say this, we had to apply under an individual name. I am the project director for this art grant. We are not a nonprofit yet, but we are the Santa Ana Community Artists Coalition, and I'm sure you know who we are. We've been here a couple of years, and we're very grateful that we were part of the selection, and we can't wait to make you proud and do a big 60-feet-by-20-feet mural. So thanks so much. I just wanted to clarify that the grant is going to an art organization that is involving over 25 local artists, and to date, we have over 300 community surveys about the vision of the mural, about what people love about Santana, what do they dream of, and we're going to make you really proud. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
Our director is Moises Camacho, a longtime community artist here. So I just wanted to clarify that, that we had to do it under one name, but there's a bunch of us behind it.
Madeline Spencer, followed by Ryan Smaller. Madeline Spencer, followed by Ryan Smoller.
Good evening, council members and staff. I'm here to talk about the homeless issue. So after a rainstorm a couple of weeks ago, a homeless woman named Roberta died at the Civic Center. The city recently denied a needle exchange program that would stop the spread of disease like AIDS and hepatitis. There were babies between the age one and two living in Civic Center during the storm that came a couple of weeks ago. The Illumination Foundation was called, and they came to take care of the situation. There's over 300 homeless who live in other parts of the city outside of the Civic Center, and also about the same number in the Civic Center. The only bathroom is the bus terminal. Issues with the downtown businesses. There are complaints throughout the downtown corridor from businesses who have to deal with the problem every day. Shop owner Mil Hugos had someone break in and steal $15,000. Later, a package was left in the store. The owner chased her down the street, and she had to struggle at her door to have it closed. She didn't even call the police because she has a perception that they don't care. Shop owner Raul Yanez at Mimoa had a homeless man come in and try on a suit and refused to take it off. Calls to the police, no response. The man had PTSD and said he would kill Raul. Shop owner at Good Beer Company finds a homeless person sleeping outside of the door of the business, must deal with getting him to leave. Shop owner at Mega Furniture sees somebody in the door for two days, and they have to call somebody to have him taken away. They thought that he actually had died there. Shop owner at Crave Restaurant regularly has problems with urination and defecation, and they have to call somebody to take care of it. The Birch Senior Center calls to have people doing lewd acts out in the park taken away. And streetcar vendors have to give away chips and things to homeless people so that they can give goods to other people with services. There's a problematic intersection also with the homeless, businesses, and the police. In one quadrant of the city, a majority of the calls that come into the police department are for the homeless, but the police are understaffed, and why should the police have to deal with issues of mental illness? Because they are neither professionally trained nor fully able to work with drugs and mental illness. On October 14th, Councilmember Martinez stated, and I quote, "That the city of Santa Ana has land-use jurisdiction and zoning over the bus terminal site." The redevelopment document for 2010-15 states "The agency in partnership with OCTA will be soliciting proposals for a food retail court in the property to serve visitors and employees of the downtown and surrounding area." That's interesting, because we just got a food court at the Fourth Street Market. November 18th, the Board of Supervisors meeting, they say 2007, Santa Ana didn't want a shelter. 2010, Santa Ana didn't want a shelter. 2013, state forced their hand, made SB 2 zone, and making cities have shelters. The discussion of the bus terminal ensues again. Then you guys reject the Normandy Shelter. The supervisor and the board says that the bus terminal is not, you're not interested in the bus terminal. There's an unanimous vote taken by the Board of Supervisors that says Normandy Place Location is where it is. Okay, the main point that I want to make right now is that I sought an update on the progress, and they said that the city and the county can't come to a joint use on the property. I know you guys want to use property that's the county's property. I know that there's people working in the bus terminal at night. And we're asking that you please expedite this process and start doing something for the homeless in Santa Ana.
Thank you. Ryan Smoller, if you can join us here at the podium. And Ryan, you're followed by Nancy Alcala.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ryan Smoller, and I work with Downtown Inc., which is one of the bid managers for Downtown. I just wanted to come and say thank you very much for recently awarding us the Art Walk, or an arts grant for the Art Walk that's produced every first Saturday of the month all over Downtown. If you haven't been to Art Walk, it's a great event. Over 30 galleries and restaurants participate, as well as tons of local artists. And what we're going to be using the grant for is $2,000 of it's going to be building a modular stage, which can be used around Downtown by us and different arts groups. And then the rest is going to hire both local artists and also exemplary artists from other communities that we want to bring here and showcase at Art Walk. We think you made a really wise choice in investing in Art Walk because it creates a lot of opportunities for artists. Some recent examples I'll highlight is a resident from the Lacey neighborhood. He showed his first works at Art Walk and was hired, actually commissioned, by the Honda Center to do a work there, and then was recently rehired by them. So we're seeing the local artists connect. And as Madeline was just talking about, the homeless actually had an art show this past Art Walk, which was really interesting. They had the help of a former UCI Communications Chair who worked with them to take photographs of their life and help explain the situation and what, you know, they're looking to do. So we really appreciate it and look forward to working more and seeing everyone at Art Walk.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you for everything that you do. Nancy Alcala.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nancy. I'm also a recipient of the Artist Grant. And I want to thank everybody. I want to thank everybody here, council and the Arts Commission, for giving me the opportunity to continue providing arts opportunities for our underprivileged communities and our youth to be able to have access to the arts, because it's very important. I, for myself, I did have access to the arts through my middle school, and that was a big inspiration for me to be able to have that, to have that opportunity to express myself through art and not through doing bad things in the community and doing things like that. And so I want to thank you all for giving the opportunity for all those kids, for all those people. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. So we're going to start our portion of the meeting by having a council member join us by teleconference. So I need to read a few things just to make sure that we comply with the Brown Act. So why don't I go ahead and do that? And I'd like to make clear that for the record, for this meeting, it should be reflected in the minutes that at least a portion of this council meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54953. And that council member, Tina Hedo, will be participating in the city council meeting by speakerphone, and hopefully he's on and listening. In accordance with the Brown Act, each teleconference location has been identified in the notice and agenda for this meeting. So please bear with me while we go through some special procedures required by the Brown Act. And I would now like to request Councilman Tina Hedo, if he can hear us, to respond to the following questions. Sal, are you within earshot of us?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can. Can everybody hear Councilmember Tina Hedo?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so council member, if you can go ahead and just respond to a couple of these questions. Councilmember Tina Hedo, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Is the agenda posted at the location where you were at?
Yes.
Where are you, by the way?
I am in Kissimmee, Florida.
Kissimmee, Florida. That's a good place to be, I think, right now, so. Is your location reasonably accessible to the public, such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes.
Is there any member of the public there with you who would like to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting or otherwise address any agenda item for this meeting?
I am looking around, and it does not seem to be like anyone wants to speak right now.
You sure? What time? I guess it's 9:00 PM over, or is it? No, it's 10:00 PM, right?
It's 10:00 PM here, yes.
Got it, got it. Well, I'd be asleep over there as well. I would like to now ask that any council member speak up at this time if they were not able to hear Councilmember Tina Hedo. Hearing no comment, the record should reflect that all council members present have indicated that they were able to hear Councilmember Tina Hedo clearly. I would next request that any council member speak up at this time if such council member has any reason to believe, based upon the voice recognition or otherwise, that the person representing himself to be Councilmember Tina Hedo is not truly so. So do we all, do we want to ask Sal some trick questions that only he could answer? No? Everybody, okay. Seeing none, the record should reflect that no council member has expressed doubt that Councilmember Tina Hedo is participating by teleconference along with city council members present here. I would now like to advise the council members and the clerk of the council that any votes taken during the teleconference portion of this meeting must be taken by roll call. So we'll make sure that everybody either sounds off or we, that's probably the best thing to do, right, Madam Clerk, to go ahead and sound off on this. So we're going to take a couple of matters, and Sal, if you don't mind, I know you're going to be joining us for one public hearing. I'd like to see if you could join us for two, since we have you on the phone and we have such clear reception. We're going to take the first item, 75A, which is the adoption, or excuse me, the public hearing to consider adopting the Downtown Enhancement and Parking Modernization Plan and adopt revised parking rates. So I'll open up the session for that, and I believe we have some speakers that wanted to address the council. And we also have a presentation. So Madam Clerk, would we, let's do the presentation first. Is that the preference of the staff? Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, council members, and Councilman Tinajaro by phone. First of all, I want to say thank you to everybody that's been involved in this effort to enhance Downtown and modernize our parking facilities. We've had a lot of work, involved a lot of people for many months. I do want to thank specifically members of the Santa Ana Business Council, Raul Yanez, Arturo, and Claudia Arienas. Arturo Lemely, Dr. Lemely, Mr. Romero, Irv Chase, Ryan Chase, Jeff Hall with the Restaurant Association, and a major landowner, Mr. Mike Hera, who have all looked at the plan and have given their support. With that, we'll go ahead and do the presentation. I'll go quickly, but please interrupt me if you'd like. Want to let everybody know that we have tremendous opportunities in Santa Ana. Our parking facilities are a first and lasting impression. We have never changed the rates in our parking garages for over 20 years. As a matter of fact, our parking rates have stayed constant for that time period. And when you compare our rates with other locations, even in the Downtown, they're 25% to 30% of the going rate. We haven't upgraded our facilities since 1980. Our parking equipment's 35 years old and in dire need of change. And because of that, we have high expenses. It's a very manual process. And this plan today looks to make efficiencies and do away with these outdated manual processes. Likewise, our meter rates haven't been changed for many years. Actually, our meter rates are less expensive than our parking structure, which is counterintuitive. You want to have your meter rates higher than your parking garage rate. So we're going to try and fix that with the proposal today, and so we have an imbalance in our pricing model. Again, I want to emphasize what a tremendous opportunity we have before us. Santa Ana is the heart of Orange County, with a county seat, the government hub, with a county transportation hub, with a historic center of Orange County, with over 100 historic structures, the fourth-highest-density city in America. Downtown sales taxes are up 39%. We have the best restaurants three years in a row. And last but not least, the streetcar is coming. And so we've got some tremendous opportunities here. We do need to make some improvements. We need more progress. We lack dedicated police officers for Downtown. We have the safety in the budget. We want to increase our security Downtown, both in the business community and the local Downtown residential community, but also in the parking structures. We've made great progress on security cameras. And we've leveraged our funds by using UAZ grant funding of $1 million. As you know, we had an 83% increase in our UAZ funding. And thank you to the police chief in our Technology Division for making those funds available. Clean and safe is very important. We have a clean team. We have recommendations for a recycling program, additional waste receptacles. We need restrooms, public restrooms and drinking fountains, and they're in this plan. We also want to make Downtown more beautiful than it already is by having attractive public spaces, walkable alleyways, parklets, a lot of things that were described today, more lighting, more efficient lighting, and of course landscaping and trees to make it aesthetically pleasing. We want to market Downtown. We want to brand Downtown. And we have year-round events and promotions. We want to build on our successes. But we need more. We need outdoor cafes. We need live music. We need entertainment. We need a jazz club. And it's all going to be possible through this plan. And we want to have a good holiday-infested decor. That was very, very popular when we put those lights up on Fourth Street last year. And what did the community say? They want more. We want to have a public Wi-Fi backbone system that people can tie into. Wayfinding and directional signage is on the way. Circulator and bike-share program are part of the funding. A robust validation program so that we can work with the Santa Ana Business Council and Downtown Inc. and provide validation for people that come down here to support and patronize our businesses. Modernization of the parking facility is key. As again, we need to have an automated system. We need to make sure it's well-lit, the elevators work. We have good revenue control systems. And we want to make sure that they're painted with fresh paint and signage, and all of that will be possible with this program. We did institute smart meters. We put in credit card capabilities. Just those two issues alone, at the same rate, added about $16,000 per month. And so that's fantastic. We added credit card readers to our parking structures. And we eliminated meter sharing so that all the revenue goes to the city rather than the next person. And just that alone is about $14,000 a month. Where'd that money go? Went to the library, went to books, it went to reading materials, it went to people in Santa Ana. Pay by phone, the future. We have 200 transactions a month, and every month that's growing. And I think that's the future with that. We also have diversity in our offerings. We have a valet program that's been very popular. We want to do more of that. And we also want to make sure that we stay within market. And we'd like to look at this every couple of years so that we don't go into a situation where we spend 10 or 15 or 20 years without updating our program. Wayfinding is on the way. Really excited about this. Council's approved it. We've got the branding in there with Fourth Street and Cayo Cuatro. And this will be happening and be implemented by January of 2016. We're asking for the rates to go to $1.50 per hour. We've got lots of detail on that that is right in the sweet spot in terms of market. And we don't want to change those rates until we show the people first that we're going to make the improvements. So it won't go to $1.50 until all the garages have been modernized and approved. And that's something we worked with, with the Santa Ana Business Council and Downtown Inc. They really wanted to make sure that we didn't charge people during the construction. And then the on-street parking rates will go up. The hours will be added. One of the things that we've heard loud and clear from everybody, and I want to emphasize this, is that we do need to improve our customer service. We want to be very, very pleasant. We want people to make sure they have a good experience and that nobody is basically a hawk in terms of how we do this. And in really the spirit of harmony and working with the business community and others, we're going to lower the fine from $56 to $40. And that, to me, shows a lot, because that's real action, and I think that's something we worked on. And we want to increase the parking regulations along Fourth Street to allow a better diversity of hours, depending on the needs of the business community, extending hours into the evening to make sure everybody participates, both in the funding and the responsibility of Downtown. And so in summary, we want to make Downtown beautiful. We want to modernize our facilities. We want to upgrade our parking structures. We want to have something that is in the sweet spot in terms of our cost and our charges. Of course, we'll monitor that very carefully. Want to address all of our deferred maintenance requirements. And so we're recommending to everybody here that we make these changes. And also, I want to make a commitment to the Mayor, Mayor Protam, all of you, that we'll continue to work with the community. We need to involve a lot of people. This is a five-year program, and today's action is to get started and go to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And now I'd like to go ahead and call those who submitted a request to speak on this item. Madeline Spencer, followed by Ryan Chase, followed by Ryan Smoller.
Hi again. So as the city moves forward in establishing a revenue source through parking to pay for the many needed enhancements in the downtown corridor, my question is one of clarification. I just gave all of you guys this parking plan, which it just showed up there. There's three different zones included in there. There's the Downtown Zone, the Civic Center area, which is called Midtown, and the Willard Zone. And I noticed that actually, in the area around... And I noticed that actually, in the area around Ocho, which is included, I believe, in the zone that's called the Willard Area, I just went by there today, and they actually don't have updated meters yet. And I'm hoping that they actually are there, and I don't think that the prices should be reduced. But that's neither here nor there. That's not what I want to talk about. The thing is that I believe that when you guys made the plan to help with downtown enhancements, you were talking about the downtown bid corridor in terms of where those fundings were going to come from. And I want to ask that the part that's called Midtown, which is actually civic center, actually those funds go to the homeless so that we can help take care of that problem, which I just mentioned. And I have another document here that shows that how Laguna said create change on their meters. They have little plaques that say where that money is going. And I think that that allocation would make a lot of sense since that is the civic center area. I would also like to know what would be made of those funding allocations in those areas because I don't think it's specified. And one more thing is that while the county is focused on long-term solutions, I think it's the city's job to focus on short emergency shelter solutions, which includes storage, bathroom sanitization measures, providing access to appropriate providers, and other interventions within the continuum of care. It has three parts, so we can't wait for the county. The county is supposed to look at long-term care. And I think that this city and all cities need to begin to look at having shelters in every single city because we've seen the NIBI situation going on all over. So I'm just bringing that up, and I think that this is a good idea, and it's another solution. I don't know where the funding is going in that part called Midtown, but I think people should think about that.
Thank you, Ryan Chase, followed by Ryan Smoller.
City Council and city staff, my name is Ryan Chase. I'm the president of Downtown Inc., as well as my family's been a proprietor in downtown Santa Ana for almost 100 years. I'm here tonight to speak about the parking plan approval, but let me start with a few facts. What do the following have in common? George Bush is President of the United States. Dow Jones Industrial Average at 2,682. A cost of one dozen eggs is $1. A cost of one gallon of milk is $1.16. Magic Johnson was the NBA MVP, and Home Alone was a top-grossing movie. Well, if you guessed the year 1990, you'd be right. So what does 1990 have to do with parking in downtown Santa Ana? Well, it's the last time parking rates went up in downtown. Pretty crazy to think that in all this time, 25 years, the city has not raised rates. And frankly, the results and the quality of the infrastructure downtown speak for itself. We're behind the times in other competing cities, and it's about time we step up and create our own destiny. Over the past six-plus months, Downtown Inc., along with the Santa Ana Business Council, Restaurant Association, among many others, and with the help of the city, produced a plan, with many compromises I might add, that helped the city of Santa Ana catch up and give us the tools we need for downtown to succeed in the long term. The parking plan is far-reaching and helps target a multitude of programs and improvements that will benefit everyone. Timing is of the essence, and this plan needs to be approved and implemented immediately. There's been enough time, enough talk, and now is time for action. I also wanted to touch briefly on another note with 75B. I express my support for Hassan and the Housing Opportunity Ordinance and Adaptive Reuse Ordinance. I think these policies will help bring Santa Ana to the 21st century and allow us to compete and take this great city to the next level. Thank you all for your time and appreciate all your work in this great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Ryan Smoller, followed by Raúl Yánez.
Hi again, Ryan Smoller, a consultant with Downtown Inc. And when I first heard about the parking plan, I was really nervous. It was a really bad idea. And then I saw what we were going to be getting out of this new plan, and I realized this is everything that we've been asking the city for and everything that we think will make downtown a success. And this was a plan to pay for it. And I commend the city manager's office and the Santa Ana Business Council and my president, Ryan Chase, for working really closely, getting a lot of feedback on this, and making sure that it made the most sense and that it was done in the best way possible. I think that the way that we've orchestrated this, that actually for up to a four-hour visit, it will cost you less with the new plan than it does currently today through validation. So we think that this actually puts us on a more level playing field with places like the mall, which can offer two-hour free parking, or can offer free parking. Now, we can offer some free parking for quick visits, which will help shops. The Santa Ana Business Council and Downtown Inc. also compromised spreading the hours out wider so that there was a bearing on restaurants having to pay into it, or those going to restaurants as well as those attending the daytime businesses. And so it's a really good thing. I think that one critical thing is that we work very closely together on the projects that are indicated that will be paid for by this because in working closely together, we're going to get a lot more out of that money, and we're going to make sure each of the line items that this money is going to are going to be big successes and make big changes for downtown. When I sit with other business districts in the city, they are still asking for these types of things that are being provided through this, and we have a plan now to pay for them, and we're really excited about that. So thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Next, Raúl Yánez, followed by Claudia Ariénez.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and council members. And the last, my name is Raúl Yánez, president, I forgot to say that, president of Santa Ana Business Council. Over the last few months, we have been working together with the city manager, Mr. Cabazos, to find ways to find, to make improvements in the downtown Santana. I'm excited that the plan is finally being presented to the council for approve, for review, I'm sorry, and I hope is approved as presented. I'm also glad that we're all able to work together to achieve common goals and progress. Thank you.
Gracias, Raúl. Claudia Ariénez, followed by Sandra Peña.
Hello. Hello, good evening. Council members, city staff, city manager. My name is Claudia Ariénez from Mega Furniture and Secretary of Santana Business Council. We are here today to ask you for your vote, to have the city commitment to utilize parking revenue from the downtown to the downtown in amenities such as what Mr. Cabazos already explained. Some of them are fix up the parking structure, two or three more parklets or promenades, drinking water fountains, sets of public bathrooms, benches, beautification of Plaza Calle Cuatro, light posts, banners, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. These are the things that we have been waiting for a long, long time. We look forward for getting, if you approve these, we are, we look forward of getting the sign letter of commitment from Mr. Cabazos as soon as it passes. So please, please hurry. Downtown doesn't want to wait any longer. Thank you. Thank you all.
Gracias, Claudia. Sandra Peña, Victor Paján.
Hello, city council, Mayor Protam, our city manager and staff. I hope everyone's having a wonderful summer. I'm Sandra Pocha Peña, and I'm an arts activist here in the city. And I want to thank everyone for supporting the, our first arts grants in the city. Thank you for investing in our creative businesses. I think it's a very important industry for our region. I'm here to comment on the parking plan. And I know that when I came back, when I came up here before to speak to you about this, it was in March of this year. And of course, you know, parking's not an easy thing to, you know, want to raise rates. Some people think it sends, you know, kind of a negative message when people get a ticket, but we have to make some difficult choices in order to fund some amenities that are very much needed. So I just wanted to just bring a couple of adjustments to mind if y'all could consider. One of them is that recently, there's been a lot of citations that are happening while the meters are still blinking green. So maybe as you select your new parking services provider, you might want to think about, you know, just kind of giving them some guidance so that it doesn't send a hostile message to people that come to our downtown. Because of course, if things aren't handled in a, you know, in a hospitable way, then it could, you know, a parking ticket could send just a really bad message. You could send the message like, you're not wanted, you know, go away. Also, I'd like to bring to mind Sunday ticketing. Sunday, as a whole in the city, has been a day when there, when parking is free. Parking is free usually downtown and in other parts of the city. But recently, with some of the permit parking that has been happening around town, you know, people have been getting tickets on Sundays. And again, that's a really important day to really bring people in, have them try out our, you know, downtown and our, our local museums. So just please reconsider ticketing on Sundays. Keep that free. Also, compassion for the disabled. You know, sometimes it takes our disabled visitors just a little extra time to get in and out of their cars, to load their gear. Just consider directing your new parking provider to just please be compassionate, to not hover over disabled visitors and threaten them with tickets. Even if the meter is maxed out at two hours, if someone is loading in a wheelchair in their car, they really don't need the extra pressure of getting a ticket. Elder consciousness also. Let's just be conscious of our older, you know, visitors. A lot of our most avid arts collectors are senior citizens. You know, they have the disposable income and, you know, they, they're big art supporters. And again, they take a little extra time to get in and out of their vehicles. We don't want to scare them away with, with, you know, hostile parking enforcement. Consider putting in some more disabled loading zones. A lot of times, especially in the artist village, the loading zones are taken up, you know, because, you know, people are loading art. And just to wrap it up.
If you'll wrap up, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, and just to, you know, wrap it up also, I know that, that the parking structures are going to be a really great option, but especially during the week when the streets are completely empty, it really is convenient to be able to park near a venue. So please consider lengthening your parking time at the meters to three hours instead of two hours. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandra. Victor Paján, followed by Theo Hirsch.
All right, thank you, everybody. And I also want to address the parking ticketing issue. Sandra was referring to a couple of incidents that we witnessed, and I sent emails to the clerk and also to Councilwoman Martinez regarding something we witnessed, which was meter officers giving a ticket, you know, ready to give a ticket when the light was green. And we videotaped it. It's on YouTube. We sent you all a link through the clerk. And this is really egregious because we were there for a minute talking to this guy who was explaining his right to give tickets while the meter was green. So if you come downtown, and we had come with a filmmaker from San Diego and his family and had spent probably, among us, $200 or more at C4, so to be ticketed for 56 extra dollars while the meter was still green really sends a bad message as to what's going on downtown. And when you consider that the city's neighboring Santa Ana have free downtown parking, Costa Mesa, Orange, also Tustin, and they have fine restaurants too, and they have, you know, a different racial mix than we do, but they feel more inviting when you go downtown. I worked downtown, and I got several tickets when I worked down here, all within five minutes of the meter expiring. And I just, in terms of what Sandra was saying, just the lack of compassion that the parking attendant had for us when we were explaining that there was somebody loading in a person with a wheelchair. We actually had a national scholar come down for the presentation of our filmmaker friend, and the main reason she chose not to join us was when we explained the parking situation, she didn't want to hassle with her husband, who was in a wheelchair, who was elderly, having to worry about parking and then, or being wheeled, you know, a block and a half to the restaurant. These are real issues, and I'm not sure how much revenue is generated, but when someone comes to this city and gets a $56 ticket at two hours on the dot, you're making being in downtown a crime. If you're here for an hour and a half, it's not a crime. You're here for two hours, exactly, it is a crime. And I think that that sends a really bad message. We have brought our film festival here for six years. We're coming back to the Frida this year. And last year, we brought a Sundance Award-winning filmmaker, and he was giving a presentation. And he said, oh, I think my meter's running out. Come and, you know, put some more money in it because he had come early to have dinner in Santa Ana or lunch and then go do his presentation. And like clockwork, there was a meter person out there ready to give a ticket. And even though I had put a quarter in there, it had maxed out the two hours, and there was no sympathy. Try, I mean, I don't know if he's coming back, but when we're putting a festival to promote this town, I would like the national people that we bring to town to understand that this is a welcoming place, not just for the tourists who come to eat at the fancy places, but for the residents, for the people who come, and for the people who come to create to the vitality of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Theo Hirsch, followed by Nancy Mejia. Nancy, you're on deck after this.
How's it going? So, yeah, I strongly agree with Madeline Spencer on the issue of the homeless. I thought it was something that was going to take, be taken care of a long time ago. And, you know, like George Carlin said, if there was a little money to be made in the homeless, the streets would clear up just like that, man. I mean, seriously. But, but the reason I'm here is, is actually, I want the money, any money, to be allocated towards, you know, not only public transportation issues, but, you know, education towards, you know, riding bikes, you know, bike lanes, things like that. We need bike lanes. We need, I've been working with this SAS group lately in organizing, you know, bike lanes and bike trails. We need bike trails. We have that one bike trail, but it just doesn't suffice. There's a couple, there's the Santa Ana River, there's some, you know, I don't walk, I mean, I don't drive my car in town. So for me, the whole parking meter thing is kind of a non-issue. But, but, you know, I think what, like, if you had like, like, you know, the bridges, pedestrian bridges around town, more, more trails, we need the bike lanes. Pretty sure you've been working on that. And what else? Just, just people need to, access to the downtown area, but not just, you know, people that go there for entertainment or whatever they do, but, you know, the people from the community need easy access to downtown. And the bike trails, the bike lanes, et cetera. And encourage people to drive smaller cars, you know. Educate people, you know, because there's, this is the most dangerous, the most densely popu, the fourth most densely populated in the United States, Santa Ana is. And what was the other thing? Yet, it's the most dangerous for pedestrians. So that's something, and that is a statistic that is real. I mean, that's, that's some reality. So we need to, we need bike lanes, we need bike trails, we need to encourage people to ride bikes and to walk and to take the bus and not drive such large cars because the large cars are annoying, they're in my way all the time. And I don't know, it's just annoying. But, yeah, some of that money needs, I say homeless and bike trails. So I think that's about it.
Thank you, Theo. Nancy Mejia, followed by Paul DeBel. DeBel.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Nancy Mejia. I'm here representing Latino Health Access and also the Wellness Corridor Steering Committee. As you know, we've been spearheading the Wellness Corridor Initiative for the last four years, and we've heard many perspectives on what people do and what they don't want in La Calle Cuatro, in the downtown, in this wellness district, downtown corridor. One of, one of the things that has been clear is that there is a need for equitable development in the downtown. You have all committed to doing this already in the strategic plan, and you have also committed to integrating health and out policies. You've also committed to promoting health and wellness strategies and the Heal Resolution that was passed a few years ago. And recently, through the Wellness District Resolution, you have also committed to doing that. So I am here today encouraging all of us to look at this plan through a health and equity lens. We have done that, and although we've seen verbal and policy commitments from the council and from the administration, I think very well-intentioned to promote health and wellness, we're not seeing that in action. So I'm here to say that we can do a lot more with this plan. One thing has been clear, for the first three years, we were told that there wasn't money to implement the amenities that the committee had laid out in the strategic plan of the corridor. I give credit, we give credit to the city manager for looking at alternative solutions to generating sustainable ways to, to find funding to, to make those enhancements on La Calle Cuatro. But we're not ready to support this plan in its current form. So I did submit a letter to all of you. I don't know if you have a copy. So I just wanted to summarize. Does everybody have a copy? Yes? So I'll just summarize the reasons we're not ready to support. We do, we're a little traumatized from the strategic plan. We participated, gave a lot of input. There was money that was allocated for amenities in the wellness corridor. For the first year of the strategic plan, we met with, I think, everybody on this council, with staff from different departments, and we never got a clear answer about how the $400,000 were going to be used. Now, we're in the second year of the strategic plan. We had a meeting last week with city staff, and we were told that money's going toward wayfinding exclusively for the downtown. That does not include wellness corridor signage, when we were under the impression that it would. So one of our concerns has to do with transparency and accountability. So we do feel that if, if council adopts this plan and decides to move forward, we need better assurances of how the money's going to be used. We also want to ensure fiscal responsibility by streamlining strategies and funding allocations We also want to ensure fiscal responsibility by streamlining strategies and funding allocations across several city plans. We've seen in several plans that there should be funding for sanitation and safety, so we want to make sure that money's being used responsibly. And the last thing is that there be improved coordination with community-led initiatives by refining proposed expenses for revenue generated, so that includes how can we promote health and wellness more proactively in the business district. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. The floor is yours, sir.
Yes, Mayor Protem and members of the city council. My name's Paul DeBel, I'm an urban planner and providing some consulting assistance to Latino Health Access on issues such as this. And to elaborate a little bit on what Nancy was referring to and to expand on the letter that, I think you said you had all received, the letter from Latino Health Access, which goes into much greater detail on the specific reservations that the organization has about the plan at this time, but mostly boils down to a lack of specificity, which leads to many questions in, with respect to the plan, or perhaps better to call it a program. The staff report, the first recommendation refers to a plan, and I was, when I first looked at the staff report, I was looking for a freestanding document that would have, you know, an overall scope of work and goals and objectives and detailed components and information that would provide answers to a lot of the questions that we have. But I understand that the plan is really a program, it's a combination of the staff report with the attachments, the pro forma, which, by the way, I went to the eye doctor yesterday, and he put eye drops in my eyes, and I had a very difficult time reading the pro forma. I'm still not sure exactly what's in there, but I'm sorry for that, but I think that is something that needs to be clarified further with respect to the financing for the plan as a whole. As you know, and as Nancy referred to Latino Health Access and under the auspices of Latino Health Access, the community-based Wellness Corridor Steering Committee has adopted a very specific plan calling for health and wellness-related amenities to be provided in the wellness corridor. The city has participated, in fact, in that process. But, and it includes many amenities, including pedestrian amenities in the downtown and adjacent residential areas, bike facilities, and so on and so forth. These are health and wellness-related. And while we recognize that raising the price of parking in the downtown will have some side benefits in terms of health and wellness with respect to creating incentives for people to walk and ride their bikes and so on and so forth, we don't see other health and wellness elements that have been under discussion for some time referred to in this plan, and we think they could be and that they should be. For example, Nancy mentioned the signs in the wayfinding program so as to include markers for pedestrian walkway and fitness routes and biking facilities in the downtown. Many other questions with respect to the financing, the use of the police, the beautification aspects, they are all in the letter, and we certainly urge that as this program moves forward, that those things be addressed through community participation.
Thank you, Paul.
And if they even move forward at the present, unless they can be addressed before it moves forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input, Paul. Seeing no other members of the public, any other additional requests to speak forms, I will close the hearing and ask the clerk if we've received any other additional written communication other than that, those that have already been entered into the record.
I have not.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open it up to the council, and if you all don't mind, I'll ask for your indulgence and ask Councilmember Tina Jero, who's joining us by phone, if he'd like to comment first, that way there's no confusion later. Councilmember, can you hear us, and would you like to kick this off?
Yes, are you, can you hear me okay?
We can, we can, loud and clear.
Perfect, perfect. Well, thank you, everyone, for your input tonight. There is, obviously, we will go ahead and take a look at all of the different comments that were made tonight. I think we have a unique experience in the time that we've been here, is that we have an opportunity to be creative in how we generate funds and where we place them. And I think the city manager has done an excellent job in illustrating the direction that we're moving into. I do want to thank the staff for their diligent work here, but one of the things that, at least, I can't speak for the entire council, but I can speak for myself, is in making those very difficult decisions in changing our leadership structure in our city, beginning with our city manager, three years, two years ago, a little bit over two years, I guess, is that, or close to two years, is that we wanted to have someone from the outside come in, someone who has been successful, and assess how we can generate revenue. And one of the things that he quickly did was, he brought in these electronic meters. We used to have parking enforcement that used to drive around downtown, and we used to have to pay those folks to go and check meters. Now everything is electronically, or in electronic. Now we are moving into an area where in the near, very, very near future, you're going to be able to get an app on your phone and pay your meter fees while you're still having dinner at a restaurant without having to get up. So we're moving into a different age. And with that, we're able to bring in revenue that had never been brought to our attention as a council, as a possibility. And so those are bold decisions, and I think that we're moving in the right direction. And I think there's room to look at every different aspect that folks spoke about tonight, and I'm ready to move forward, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, councilmember, and the only thing I'd request next time is that we put a picture of Sal right there, so we can see him, because it looks like we're just getting a empty hollow voice.
I'm sorry, I missed that, a picture of what?
A picture of you on the screen as you're speaking, that way it just makes it more personal and intimate. Just kidding.
Yeah, and you know, it's always good to have a handsome-looking guy, you know, on that big screen.
That helps move things along. Councilwoman Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and please indulge me here. As you know, I represent this district, and I have been very passionate about public transportation and about transit facilities since I've been elected to this city council, and the kind of vision I wanted to see for the downtown. You know, I probably will be the only one up here that is not in agreement with our city manager, and I think we've had the discussion from the moment that he brought this up. And, you know, hey, with all due respect, I applaud him for bringing something before the council versus just not bringing anything forward like prior city managers, never brought anything forward. So I do applaud our city manager for doing that. But let me tell you why I'm in disagreement. When I look at the city of Santa Ana and where it's at, we could be so much further, but because of lack of vision and really doing things, and excuse my language, but half-ass, we have not been able to move to the next page. And when you talk about public transit facilities and public transit for a downtown, it is vital. The complaints that we've heard from our business community in the nine years that I've been on this council, and I continue to hear, and I understand that we need to turn the page, that we need finances to help with some of the amenities that many of you have asked for. But when we talk about making sure that there is a long-term vision, that there's sustainability, that there's equity, this plan does not provide that. And that's, you know, probably the biggest reasons why I'm not supportive. You know, as the vice president of SCAG, I see, you know, parking plans and parking policies across Southern California, and I read them all. And I've brought in, we've brought in the experts here, and, you know, this parking situation and the automation was prior to our city manager, there's years, but I do thank David Cavassos though, because he facilitated and implemented, he actually got our policies through and done. And that's where I applaud him, that he didn't wait, and so I do want to thank him for that too. But this was all in the making, whether it been the wayfinding, that no, everyone thought Michelle Martinez was crazy that that didn't exist, the parking management study that took place three years ago, that we paid hundreds of thousands of dollars, that didn't exist. All these things existed, it's just that we've gone through management and staff and just a lack of will and vision and determination to get things done, we have not been able to really move the page forward in the downtown as you talk about parking. And parking, we have to understand, it is not free. Someone is always going to pay for parking. So if you think that in Tustin or at the Main Place Mall, that you're there and you're going there because it's free, it's not free, ladies and gentlemen, somebody's subsidizing it. So let's make that very clear. And so I, again, applaud our city manager for understanding for the past 25 years, there hasn't been any increment changes or changes to the fees for parking. But I believe that we need to create an infrastructure that is going to be equitable, not just creating a culture for the car. We're trying, we have a paradigm shift in our downtown, and we're saying we want to bring a streetcar, you know, we want to say that we want more bike facilities, we want more pedestrian access in a safe manner, but when we continue just to push the car, the car, the car, we're not changing that culture. And it starts with our policies, so if we're going to want to move forward, it is my hope, because I know I probably don't, I'm probably one of the only ones up here that may not be supportive, but we want to make sure that within these new parking facilities, and I urge my colleagues that they do more for supporting this, that not only do we do the automation in our parking structures, but we make sure to also assure that we also are accommodating, you know, not just a regular vehicle, but those vehicles, electrical vehicles, charging stations, that we have bike share, that we have zones for ride share, like Uber, like Lyft, that we have, you know, shuttle stops, and I know that a circulator is coming, and I want to thank our city manager for hearing me out and the importance of that. But you're going to need loading, you're going to need zones for that, you're going to need zones for the Uber and the Lys and possibly Car2Go, because let me tell you, bike share and Car2Go will be coming to Santa Ana, it is essential. If you want downtown Santa Ana to be successful, you may have to assure that it is multimodal, that it is not just for the vehicle, but you've got to have an infrastructure in place that is going to accommodate it across the board, that we're not just going to pay attention to the car and wanting to make sure that we're going to go ahead and charge a person that comes into our downtown $1.50 more so that they can come and park nearby. We need to make sure that we change a culture and say, you know what, we want you, you live a mile away, we want you actually to get on a bicycle, we want you to walk in a safe manner, or we want you to get in a Car2Go. We need to create that kind of infrastructure in our downtown as we continue to move forward with our 5Ks. Let me tell you, last year, parking was a mess. Parking was a mess. The more and more events that we're going to have, we need to make sure that we're able to manage the parking situation. According to our city manager's plan, we have, I think, a total in the downtown, it's 1,559 spaces, and that's how he's really, really breaking down the construction costs of the details here, and exhibit one here. And I'll tell you that with those spaces, and as we move forward within our downtown, and we start to continue to grow with the momentum that we have now, we have wine crawl, we have, you know, Santa Ana Savior, there's so much amazing things happening in the downtown, but we need to make sure that we're able to get people there in various different ways. And we're not going to be able to do that if we're not strategic. And again, and, you know, we have a new planning director, and he says this all the time, and I think we're all starting to say it, it has to be reliable, predictable, and consistent. And this plan here is not fully fleshed to making sure that we have all those things. I know we have to start somewhere, and I definitely know that, but I'm the kind of person that pays attention to the details. I just don't want to say that I'm going to get this great money, we're going to do X, Y, and Z, because let me tell you, a year down the road, I'm going to have a Raul Yanis coming, or Ryan Chase or someone else saying, "Oh, man, it's all sounded good, but, man, we're in a more, in a world of hurt," you know, because that always happens when you don't have a long-term vision. And so I want us to be cognizant of that. I want to end just with this, and because I think it's very important. As we move forward, and I'm certain that my colleagues are going to move forward, because our city manager's worked really hard at this, he has, you know, he has the businesses out there coming here, supporting him, I see my colleagues smiling, and, you know, I see it, and I'm okay, and I thank him for his efforts in moving this forward. But what I want to state is this, and it's the end, as we update our circulation element, parking management is vital and crucial. The circulation element nor the general plan has even come before the city council. It has been on hold for various reasons, you know, one specifically the Vision Zero Plan, the safety component, it wasn't implemented in the circulation element, but the other important part, so let's just not always talk about money, because we want to make sure whatever funding streams that do come forward, that they are sustainable, that they are predictable, that they are consistent. And so to have all of that, you need to make sure that you have a plan in place and a fully-fledged plan that we're paying attention to the details. And so right now, I just want to end with this, Mr. City Manager, and that hopefully that you will incorporate this and work with our planning director and our public works director and our new downtown liaison, you know, because hopefully he will be starting soon, and hopefully I'll be able to take him out there and walk the downtown, is that we have other parking spaces available within the civic center, hundreds of spaces out here, we have hundreds of spaces at the train station. I look at these areas still considered the downtown, and we need to make sure that these parking spaces are included within this plan as we move forward with the big events that we have and how we're going to be able to circulate people, and the importance of when bike share comes in, the circulator comes in, Car2Go, and you're going to hear me continuing to say that, because we need multimodal, let's not just talk about the car and how we're going to park the car, because it goes beyond that. And so I just want us to be open-minded and realize that the other parking amenities and spaces that we have within the civic center, when people leave at 5:00 PM, all these spaces become available, and also as well, we have a huge parking structure at the train station, and as the streetcar comes and we have big events like our 5K, how are we going to park people over here in our civic center or in train station so that we don't have the mess that we've continued to have when we have hundreds of people wanting to come into the downtown? So I just want my colleagues to be cognizant of that, and, you know, Mr. City Manager, you know, have at it, you know, I welcome your tenacity and your willingness to bring something forward. With that being said, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Amescua.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. First of all, I'd like to thank all of those who came up here and commented on this plan. I'd like to thank our city manager, because I know he's been working diligently on this plan, and I can't tell you how pleased I am to see Downtown Inc. and the Santa Ana Business Council working together. I really believe that when you work together, great things happen, so keep up the good work, and I hope to see you working together and collaborating a lot more in the future as well. I agree with a lot of what my colleague mentioned, as far as we need to look at the circulation element in terms of, you know, zoning and, you know, as we move forward, but I think for tonight, I am ready to support this. I think it's a great start, I know you've been working really hard on it, and I do think, I do have one question regarding the three-hour limit versus the two-hour limit, what would be the impact of changing it to three hours?
Thank you. To Councilwoman Martinez, thank you for your comments, and Councilwoman Amescua, we have worked very closely with the group, and there are, there is a need, for example, by the furniture store for longer-term parking, people want to buy furniture and they need more than two hours, they want to make sure their parking's closed. Also in the evening, the restaurants and the shows take more than two hours, so in the evening hours will be longer, so the goal is to work very closely to have short-term parking to two hours, but mainly at four, and we're going to increase the time of operation an additional two hours in the evening.
So we would, on top of the two hours, they'd have the option to pay for an additional two, making it a total of four?
Yes, there would be a four-hour meter in the evening, and also four-hour meter times along certain places in the Fourth Street.
And also, if we can look at, I know the video on YouTube with the meter still being green, I think those are some of the issues that were brought, I think we can look at and just tweak them, make sure that people aren't being ticketed when it's still green, making sure, you know, that whoever's giving out tickets, they're just a little more considerate of, you know, people's circumstances.
Thank you, Councilwoman, that's very important. We did reduce the fine, so that's major progress. I found out today that that light takes about 10 seconds to turn green, that person's probably overcommitted in his job, so... That person's probably overcommitted in his job, uh, so I'm gonna, uh, explain to him that we don't have to be that good. Uh, and, uh, we, uh, need to be a little bit more gracious and understanding with people that have disabilities. And so I'm going to meet personally with all the parking lot attendants and give them our vision for customer service. The goal is to have a good, reliable, predictable, consistent parking system. See, I listen, uh, uh, but not to get over jealous and make it uncomfortable for people.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Benavides.
Thank, thank Mayor Protam threw me off.
No.
It's not, that's, uh, that's, it's all good. Um, you know, I, I've been on the council here for, for a number of years and, uh, a few years ago, we, we, uh, we had a number of the speakers who were here tonight, uh, come and share with us very passionately about concerns that they had, uh, regarding a, uh, an improvement district. And, uh, for, for many, many months, uh, we had two groups, uh, on two different sides of the issue, uh, come and, and speak very passionately. Uh, and, uh, uh, just kind of to put it lightly, uh, we, we were in a, in a tough spot here being on the, on the council, seeing, I knew it was, it was painful, you know, to see our downtown and people in our downtown who've been here a long time, who've invested, who believe in our city, who've invested in our city, invested in businesses, uh, uh, being, uh, uh, just, uh, on opposite sides of an issue and, 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 uh, they're being, uh, just, just a rift toward downtown. Uh, so, so to see, uh, members of the downtown Santa Ana, or the Santa Ana Business Council and Downtown Inc. coming together, um, speaking, uh, in concert in support of, of this effort, of this, this new, uh, program, parking program and the plans for enhancements and improvements, um, it, it's just, uh, uh, just a refreshing and encouraging, uh, uh, time and day, uh, here for, for me personally, I think for, for probably, uh, all of us on the council and, and, uh, so I, I'm, uh, kudos to you, uh, uh, Mr. City Manager. Uh, that, that was one of the things actually sometime back, we, we, we asked you if, if you can go out there and do something on that and bring folks together. Uh, we charged you with that early on and, and you worked, uh, on that clearly and, and you, uh, you're delivering on bringing our, our community together, business community together. Again, folks that I, friends, folks that I, that I respect, uh, that, that have, that I believe in our, in our city and downtown for, for a long time. So I, I'm just grateful to see those smiles and see that, that support and, and, and our, our, uh, these, these associations coming together. Maybe at some point they'll continue to be, bring even be, uh, work even more closely together and, and really see what we can do, uh, on a, on a unified effort to, to Councilwoman Amesqua's point. Uh, so, uh, seeing all of the enhancements, all of the, you have, uh, promised quite a bit. We're promising a lot if we support this plan tonight. And one of the things that I believe in is in being people of our word. Uh, so if we're going to stand behind this as a council, if we're, we're essentially committing to what staff has presented to us, uh, as promises, the, the, these need to be not promises, but deliverables. Uh, I know there were dates that were set up timelines within the, uh, the schedule of enhancements, uh, and I would expect as, as the, the public, uh, would expect that we would, uh, follow through. Uh, so that's just one of the things that, that, uh, again, I, I, uh, I very likely this will be passing, uh, tonight and, uh, and I would, you know, they should be able to hold us accountable, we should be able to hold our staff accountable and, and I'll, I'll, uh, deliver and, and be, uh, celebrating these, these true enhancements. Uh, two questions that I do have, uh, I, I have received some, uh, was contacted and some of our speakers tonight spoke about the amenities when it comes to, uh, public improvements that would benefit, uh, not only just visitors, but also folks from our community that would choose to take a stroll, take a walk. Uh, we have made some commitments as a city to support, uh, the, the, the theme of wellness and health in our community. Uh, public restroom is something that's a basic need, uh, that, uh, an amenity that, that I know we've, we've talked about and it was mentioned tonight. So I want to ask what our, uh, commitment is on, on that. A drinking fountain, drinking fountains, water, just basic, you know, if folks want to come out, take a stroll, take a walk. Uh, we, we've talked about Plaza, Plaza Calle Cuatro, uh, having that available. Uh, so if you can speak to, to both of those, and I have one final comment as well.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Benavides. Uh, all of the items here will be, uh, presented to the city council for action. And so we'll make sure that as we progress, uh, you all are constantly aware where we're at and we're also going to have a working group put together to involve the community along the way. Uh, we are going to have a public restroom, very important. Uh, right now it's planned for the Third, uh, Street and Bush Lot. Uh, drinking fountains, uh, one of the things that was asked was, uh, sidewalk cafes, outdoor dining grants, that's in here. The, uh, another thing that's very important to wellness is, uh, the general aesthetics and also the safety. People want to be safe, part of wellness. So we believe that, uh, this is in alignment with both the strategic plan and, uh, the desire that the council provided for health and wellness.
Uh, thank you, uh, City Manager. The, uh, the water, uh, water fountain, water accessibility specifically at Plaza Calle Cuatro, is that something that we can look at, uh, making sure it's part of this, uh, these improvements? Thank you. And, uh, the, the, the final is we are moving forward with wayfinding, which is fantastic. It, it's one of those things that will add, uh, just to clarity on, on visitors, but also just add improved, uh, uh, improve with, uh, the aesthetics as well. Uh, we again, the, the, the theme of wellness and specifically the wellness corridor, want to encourage folks to walk. I just want to encourage, uh, uh, you to look at, uh, when it comes to signage, uh, to connect, you mentioned that there would be some, some, uh, community, uh, involvement in some of these improvements that we look at, uh, making those, those, uh, that signage for the wellness corridor, corridor, part of what we, uh, include. Uh, again, just to be able to provide not only directions to parking and, and directions to, or just naming the different districts, but also, uh, creating ways for, for, uh, uh, basically, uh, kind of themes or ways for people to be able to walk and, and, uh, and enjoy, you know, strolls and exercise, uh, throughout the downtown. I think that'll be helpful. So, uh, given that, I know that there's been an actual motion, I think, uh, Councilman Sal, or Councilman Tinajero referenced it, but I'm going to go ahead and, and, uh, and make a motion, you know, there's several other, uh, uh, councilmembers that would like to speak as well.
I, I just had one quick thing to add regarding the installation of the public restrooms. If we could make sure that at least one of those stalls is a family restroom where, um, you know, if there's a single dad that needs to take his daughter into the restroom, he doesn't want to take her into the men's restroom, or, you know, that would also be helpful for, um, people with children with disabilities, um, with special needs. So if we can include a family restroom, I think that would be very helpful.
Definitely, and, uh, that, that would provide great flexibility and that's something we really need.
And I, I'd like to second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor and I'll, I'll continue with, um, uh, comments. And I think according to Councilman Benavides, Councilwoman Martinez, it wasn't us that was smiling, it was the public that was smiling, so, right? Councilman Reyna.
Sure, I definitely, uh, we'll try to keep this brief. Uh, I think we've been on the council now for a little over two and a half years. And, and, and prior to those two and a half years, really didn't see much development, uh, within our community. And, and the first six months, when I got onto this council, we had a changing of the guards as far as sitting on the, uh, the, the, the city, uh, manager's position. And we finally were able to land, uh, David Colossus. And, and in a short period of time, through your leadership, you have done a phenomenal, phenomenal job. And I know there were things on the board that were, things already on the table, uh, like the UT tax, uh, that just for whatever reason didn't get done before your leadership. The update of, of the parking meters that could have been done at any point prior to your arrival. Your leadership has definitely moved us in the right direction. I think our city's better off with you as a, uh, as, as the head of that particular position. Uh, is it perfect? No, but, but, but progress, right? Absolutely. I think our city today is a lot better off than it was two and a half years ago. So I want to thank you for your leadership. I want to thank you for the, your staff and selecting great quality people to come into our community. I think downtown is, is going to be phenomenal, uh, just the tip of the iceberg. Uh, so I just wanted to make those particular comments and thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember. And, you know, uh, prior to two and a half years ago, um, this council was busy trying to keep the city out of bankruptcy, um, you know, and, um, and paving about 300 miles worth of streets and roads, all this during the worst economic recession that this country's seen. So, you know, we have been busy, but, uh, and we also, I think cleansed and purged, uh, the culture here in City Hall that made it very difficult to do many things. So the reason why we have a city manager here was because many of us on the council for the past almost 10 years, or excuse me, eight years, uh, did a lot of heavy lift, but I, I, I get the sentiment. So, um, I'm going to be supportive of this, um, of this, uh, agenda item. And let me just make a couple of points before we move forward and take the vote. Um, I do want to emphasize that, um, it's funny because I know the councilwoman and I were, uh, were on our way to, uh, to a meeting and we stopped. I was dropping her off at her, uh, at her apartment. She lives right in the downtown and we stopped there just for a few minutes and a person on a meter came back, came behind us and before we could even do anything and explain, our ticket and our citation was written up. Uh, we took it because we realized, look, we're members of the community, we're members of the public and there's no reason why we should be shown any preferential treatment. But what it, but what it did reflect was that there was an overzealousness, I think, on behalf of the, uh, staff that we witnessed perfect, uh, personally without any videotape or anybody else showing us anything. So I get people want to do their job and do it well, but sometimes there's a courtesy, I think, that can be shown any member of the public, especially those who are elderly, especially those who are disabled, but anybody in the community who's having difficulty moving around. I know you're very sensitive to that, Mr. City Manager, so you and I've had this conversation, so I certainly appreciate you making sure that it's embedded in whatever premise that we're going to adopt tonight. Because if we don't do that, what happens is, is that, um, in an effort to generate funds for amenities, uh, we do it at the cost of losing public, um, and losing people that come here and spend good money if they're treated. I don't think people are bothered by paying, I think people are bothered by being treated poorly. That's what I think people walk away from. And so if you're treated with respect, even if it costs 50 cents more, look, you pay it because it's, you know, you're getting a good, um, experience and you come back to the downtown as a, uh, as a result of that. The, um, only other things that I would mention to you is that, I think I've mentioned this before, I know that I get really, um, annoyed by the fact that people can't come into the parking structure on Fourth Street through Fourth. They have to kind of go around Fifth and they're detoured around. I'm not sure if that's gotten resolved, but it, to the extent that that could be addressed, if we can make sure we could do that. It used to be backed up.
We fixed that.
That's perfect. I know you, we used to have a backup, so thank you for doing that because we'd have a long backup. So now that, that's taken care of. Obviously people have spoken about the 88, um, requirements. We're, we're, we're coming upon the 25th anniversary, uh, of the adoption of the American with Disabilities Act. So to the extent that's obviously incorporated into anything that we adopt that affects the, um, special needs community, I would be very, very, um, supportive of that. Um, finally, um, what I would want to thank more than anything are, are, uh, the speakers who came before us and, and, and talked to us about, um, you know, the sacrifices they make every day as business owners in the downtown. And I think that if they see the benefit to this, um, I show a lot of deference because I, I know my family has a business downtown as well, but those of you who spent the time and invested the, the, um, effort and resources into talking about this with our staff, talking with it amongst your members and amongst you all, um, I want to thank you. And that means you, uh, Señores Arrellanes, um, Ryan Chase was here, others from, um, you know, the community groups down, downtown. I want to thank you all for taking the time to making sure that this is a, an intelligent, thoughtful, um, agenda matter. So with that, I'll go ahead and, um, I think we have a motion, um, from, from the council member and the second from Councilwoman Amesqua, and we're going to do a roll call vote because, um, because Councilmember Tina Hedo isn't here. So Madam Clerk, uh, please proceed.
Councilmember Tina Harrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Nay.
Mayor Protam Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Benavides?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyna?
Yes.
Councilmember Amesqua?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So if my, uh, math is correct, that, uh, is, is adopted by a five-one and, uh, the mayor is, is absent and will not be voting on that. So, um, let's move along. Thank you for that. Um, uh, Councilman Tina Hedo, do you mind joining us for one additional matter? We're going to try to get you to bed soon. Um, it's about 11 o'clock over there, so I'm going to request from my colleagues to go ahead and make their comments brief, but, um, can you join us for one more matter?
Yes, I appreciate the brief.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilman. So, um, Madam, uh, City Clerk, I'm going to call 75B out of order. That is the, um, uh, Housing Opportunity Ordinance Matter. Um, this is the time for, this is the time for a public hearing to consider approving the zoning ordinance amendment, number, uh, 2015 dash O3, to update the Housing Opportunity Ordinance and Adaptive Reuse Ordinance. And I believe staff has a presentation for us.
Good evening, um, Mr. Mayor Protam, uh, Councilman Tina Harrell and the rest of the city council, I'm, uh, happy to be presenting to you the very first item that I get to work on, um, uh, in the city of Santa Ana. And, uh, within the first couple of days that I started my new position on June 1st, I started hearing at least a dozen comments about the unworkability of the Housing Opportunities Ordinance. So I, um, I started looking at that to see if there are any corrections that we could probably propose to the city council, and here we are tonight. Uh, first and foremost, um, I need to figure out how this works. Sorry, we're having a technical difficulty at this moment.
I'm having a little bit of a difficult time hearing.
Can you hear us okay, Councilman?
Now I can hear, thank you.
I will speak into the microphone, maybe, uh, Councilman Tina Harrell can hear me better.
That works great, thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't we do this? Let's go ahead and, uh, take, or is it, is it up?
Well, that one is not showing up.
Look, as they, okay, there we go. Go ahead.
Okay, so the, the purpose of the underlying, to start with, I wanted to point out the underlying purpose of the Housing Opportunities Ordinance. And that is to ensure creation of high-quality, affordable housing along with market rate housing with minimum or no public subsidy. Uh, with that in mind, uh, we, so looking at the current Housing Opportunity Ordinance, it was adopted in November 2011 and it was referenced into the 2014 housing element. It requires that 15% of new housing to be affordable every time market rate housing is produced. And it applies to any time there is a zone change that results in residential density increases, uh, or approved applications, uh, proposing to increase residential components exceeding original mixed use development approvals. In this case, it means if an application was approved and then they came and changed it later on and increased the number of residential, uh, units in that project, then the, the ordinance would apply. And then the conversion of commercial or industrial land to residential uses and conversion of rental units to condominiums, uh, when the ownership, uh, when the project includes more than five units. And then the construction of new residential projects of a five or more units. All of these are cases where the ordinance applies. Uh, the conversations that I had at the very beginning, uh, were about complaints about the ordinance, that it is unpredictable, inconsistent, there are too many unknown steps in the process, and that makes adaptive reuse of, uh, buildings too costly, does not allow for reliable financial planning of projects because people cannot predict what it will cost them towards the end of the project, and makes Santa Ana a lot less competitive in attracting new market rate housing development. Uh, so with those in mind, we, we had a number of goals in reviewing the ordinance. And here are the goals. To create affordable housing mixed with market rate housing and to minimize public subsidies for affordable housing production, to maintain our competitive edge on attraction of private investment in housing production, especially, uh, market rate housing production, and to, uh, here we go, uh, Councilwoman Martinez, to have a clear, consistent and predictable development pathway, and to allow the creation of a diverse, of diverse hob, housing options for our socio-economically diverse population, provide options to minimize inclusionary housing costs to the developer, and then to minimize negative impacts on existing tenants when the developer is rehabilitating a project, the tenants will get displaced to minimize the impacts on those. And, um, in considering these, these, uh, issues, we noticed that, um, that the ordinance, as it is written, does constrain historic adaptive reuse of historic buildings and adaptive reuse of non-historic. existing buildings for new purposes. And then it does treat new and existing developments, because of the way it's written, as the same while the economies of those developments were different. They were conceived and developed under different sets of circumstances by the developers, but the housing ordinance treats them as the same. And it also constrains alternatives to construction of new units on site. In other words, the developers have little alternative in terms of providing their affordable housing requirement in many different ways to make it more cost-effective for them. We presented a presentation to the Development and Transportation Committee, and after that, at the direction of the committee, we held a number, a couple of meetings, roundtable discussions, that we invited housing developers and housing advocates alike, and market-rate and affordable housing developers were available. So we had two stakeholder discussions, one on July 8th and another on July 13th. And in those two discussions, we hashed out a lot of these issues, and we tried to come as close to a compromise as possible. And after that, we presented the proposed draft ordinance to the Planning Commission on its meeting of the 20th of July last month. What we are proposing in the new ordinance with this modification is, number one, to exempt any project that was approved to the prior date of the adoption of the original ordinance in 2011. There's only one project that we know that was adopted, has not been built, but has gotten extensions on its permits. Other than that, there's no other project that falls in this category. However, the housing ordinance is trying to claw back those projects and apply the inclusionary housing to them, which is one of the issues that we have identified, that the economies of the project as they were conceived at that time prior to the adoption of the ordinance were different, and to apply the 15% requirement of affordable housing to them will put an undue burden on the financial planning of the project. Therefore, we recommend that you exempt that project, that one project that exists. And the existing ordinance does not differentiate between moderate, low, and very low in terms of the percentages. We're recommending that for sale projects to require moderate-income housing production at 15%. And the reason that for sale projects, we're recommending that the requirement be for moderate-income housing is that low and very low-income housing projects for sale have a very difficult time attracting qualified people to get lending to purchase those properties. And then even if the city provides shadow, what we call shadow loans to help them start, they have a hard time maintaining the payments and keeping the houses, housing available to themselves. So for the sake of making that possible, we're saying that for sale projects, condominiums, we should limit the requirement to moderate-income housing. And in this case, the benefit that the city gets is that you get homeowners as opposed to renters for those projects. That in itself is a benefit that many cities strive to accomplish. And then for rental projects, we say for low or very low, 10% of the housing projects, and I'm sorry, this is a mistake. We're saying 15% very low-income housing requirement and 10% very low-income housing requirement. They can either opt to do 10% very low or 15% low-income housing production to meet the inclusionary housing requirement. We're also recommending to exempt adaptive reuse from the Housing Opportunities Ordinance. Adaptive reuse in this case is both the historic buildings that are earmarked to be used for something other than they have been historically, and then the buildings that, we have several multi-story buildings that people want to convert to residential. These are buildings that were built in the '60s. There is a green and environmentally favorable way to reuse those buildings instead of knocking them down, to add them to landfill and build new buildings. So in this case, the reason is environmental.
Mr. Argani, a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
When you mention the rental, on the rental category, a low being at 15% and very low at 10%, are you suggesting then that in this proposed modifications to the ordinance that the builder, the home builder, would essentially be able to choose one of either those categories if they did provide a rental for low-income residents, that they would be, still be required at the 15%, but if they were to choose to provide for very low, then they would only be able to, only need to provide housing, or 10% of their units?
That's correct. That is what we're recommending.
Somewhat of a tier, and so they would have the option to choose?
Exactly. And their main reason is that the difference, the gap between, for the developer to fill in terms of financial commitment would be just different for low and very low because of the income would be a lot less for very low-income housing, and therefore, so the requirement would be a little less. In this case, 10% is what we're recommending.
And then another question. You mentioned the exemption for projects that have already been approved prior to the adoption of the original Housing Opportunity Ordinance. How would these modifications, if approved tonight, affect projects that are already in process?
We have a recommendation for those, the batch of projects, and I'll get into that. We recommend to give them options, and I'll get to that in a minute. Okay. Then, this particular slide, we had a number of low-income housing advocates in the roundtable discussions that showed dismay and expressed reservation about exempting adaptive reuse projects from the inclusionary housing requirement. And the reason that we recommend that is that the second any developer comes to our agency to convert a building from whatever it is to residential, the number of code required...
Did we lose a council member? Maybe he's probably in Kissimmee, Florida, that's why.
In this map, the number of requirements that we ask the developer to...
Hassan, let me interrupt you just for a second. Sal, are you there?
Yes.
All right, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, we can hear you. We're going to go forward. We lost you there for a minute.
Yeah, just for a split second.
All right.
Thank you. So the number of requirements, costly requirements that we impose on them will make the project financially infeasible. If on top of all of the code requirements, fire and building code in particular, the cost of making those changes are so high that adding the inclusionary housing requirement at that point will most often make the project infeasible, and the developer will walk away from the idea of conversion of buildings. So, and in this map, we show the number of buildings that staff thinks might be eligible and developers might take advantage of in the entire city. It's about a dozen buildings, and we do not think that giving up this particular category is going to really make a lot of a difference in the long run. So we continue recommending to exempt adaptive reuse of buildings from the inclusionary housing requirement. And then to continue with the modifications, residential projects, right now, the current ordinance allows, requires projects over 20 to provide the inclusionary housing, but they can come and ask to pay an in-lufy to be determined through negotiations. That is one of the things that make the ordinance unpredictable and difficult to work with. So here, we're recommending that every project that is over 20 units be required to provide the housing, whether on-site or off-site, and not be allowed to have, to pay an in-lufy at any place. There was a lot of discussion with the roundtable discussions that whether this is the best version or not, after the developers considered this, they said, if you allow us some concessions, we'd rather provide the housing units, which is actually what the city had originally intended, to have housing units produced at no cost to the public as affordable housing. So this would allow us to achieve that by requiring the developers to produce the housing units for any project over 20 units. But projects under 20 units or under can still pay the in-lufy. And however, the developers get several options to make this a little bit more cost-effective for them. So they may provide their units either on-site or off-site. So that's the next bullet. So we're also introducing the off-site production of the affordable housing units. We also allow the rehabilitation of existing housing units off-site to meet the inclusionary housing requirement goal. However, if they are rehabilitating a building, we're requiring that one and a half square feet of affordable housing be produced for every square foot of affordable housing that they are required to produce if they're rehabilitating a building and it's not a brand-new building project. However, there are four target areas in the city that the city has actually recently been encouraging developers to purchase existing buildings and rehab and upgrade those buildings in those areas. Those four target areas, we're saying, one square foot for every required square foot of affordable housing for rehabilitated buildings will meet the inclusionary housing requirement. And then the inclusionary unit production is 100% responsibility of the developer. What we mean by that, and the way that we've said it in the ordinance, is that the developer may not request public assistance from the city to produce the inclusionary housing requirements that are part of their market-rate housing requirement. So this is an additional restriction that we're introducing here. I mentioned there are four places where rehabbing existing buildings will meet one square foot for one square foot the inclusionary housing requirement. These four areas right now are Cornerstone Village, Cedar Evergreen, Town Center Right, and West Myrtle. In the future, as the council identifies other target areas, those target areas will be subject to the same provision for the developers. And the other change that we made, the ordinance makes a difference between ownership units and rental units. Ownership units are required to be affordable only 45 years, and rental units 55 years. In this ordinance, we are making them the same. Every affordable housing unit that's produced will be subject to 55-year inclusionary housing or affordable housing status. And for conversions, again, with conversions, we have the same problem as adaptive reuse. When you have existing apartment buildings that they're converting to condos, the conversion itself is costly. And we also get on top of it ownership status for those buildings as opposed to rental status or renter status. So there is a benefit we already get. And the economics are such that if you add the inclusionary housing, you might, again, discourage people from converting apartments to ownership units. We do not recommend that have the entire 15% requirement be applied, as long as the number of units meet the general plan required densities. If the densities are the same as what the zoning code says today, we say allow them to convert without producing affordable housing units. However, if the existing buildings, and that happens to be the case in certain parts of the city where we have downzoned, the existing buildings have higher densities than the general plan allows today, the portion that's higher than the density is allowed, that portion would be subject to the inclusionary housing requirement. So this is a distinction that still encourages conversion without making it economically difficult. And then the existing ordinance, the Executive Director of Economic Development and Housing has certain authorities to make discretionary decisions. We're recommending to take those completely out of the ordinance and make the ordinance clear and predictable by right and per requirement without any particular person playing a role. And then we also, the existing ordinance has a very complicated in-lufy calculation method that nobody can really understand from the development community. We're recommending that to do one flat fee per square foot requirement. At this point, we're recommending $5 per square foot. There's no scientific method that went to this. This is based on the negotiations that have been happening over the last several months. We looked at the profile of the negotiations and what the council has landed with some of the developers, and it came down to about $5 per square foot. In some cases, it's higher; in some cases, it's lower. But it's about $5 per square foot, which amounts to something like $5,000 for a one-bedroom unit or about $7,000 for a two-bedroom unit. So we're saying that for the 20 or fewer units that are eligible to pay the in-lufy, only pay a $5 per square foot for affordable housing.
Hassan, for the benefit of Councilmember Tina Hedo, if you want to skip any slides, go through them quicker. We've got a lot of requests to speak here as well, so please...
Will do. I'll just follow the points in the ordinance, and then I will skip to the end.
Actually, I just got one question. As you mentioned, the $5 calculation, how it was kind of based out of negotiations and interactions and whatnot, there's really no formula to that. And you came up with a particular number. How does that number relate to other cities and what they're doing?
It's, for the most part, lower than some of the cities that have in-lufys. But, and in this case, the only reason that we're recommending it is that this is really what's happening. This is what is bringing developers here, and they're willing to produce. We are recommending that to revisit everything in three years and maybe raise this if it's warranted or not, if it's not warranted. We want to see some housing production. And at this point, we're not seeing enough housing production compared to other jurisdictions.
When you say it's comparable to some of the other cities, is it $5, 25, is it $8? Is that comparable?
You know, it depends. Because some other cities actually use higher in-lufys as a way to slow down development. For example, Pasadena, I can tell you that five years ago had an in-lufy of something like $15 a square foot. And then they raised it when the community was up in arms to slow down development because there was a ton of development happening. They raised it to over $35 a square foot. And for a while, it did stop development. And then its development started picking up again. So yes, there are other cities that have higher fees. But then again, it has to do with the amount of demand that they're facing and how much of that will help them slow down demand and development.
And as you guys are proposing these modifications, prior to this proposal, what was that calculation? What number was at that level?
You know, we looked at several different projects. There are projects that were calculated at about maybe $15 a square foot. There are projects that were even less than $5 a square foot. It varied. The variation was, it was all over the place.
Wow.
That's why we're actually asking that to take away that negotiation process and then make it a flat fee and stick with it.
And any of these conversations, stakeholders were involved?
Yes, the stakeholders were involved, including the ones who have had projects that they have negotiated. Sure. So, and then, this is the part that the developers asked that we offer for the production of the housing on-site. They asked for some concessions. We took this directly out of SB 1818, the state planned for, to create affordable housing through incentives. I'm not going to go through every one of these, but we're giving them a number of zoning code incentives that actually calculate, translate to financial savings for the developer. Pipeline projects, there was a question earlier about the projects that have already negotiated. Like I said, there are different projects and they have negotiated different rates. But at this point, we're recommending to give them the opportunity to have level playing field so that all developers will be subject to the same thing. For that, we recommend that you allow the developers that have pipeline projects, and whether or not they have negotiated a fee, to be able to take advantage of the $5 per square foot formula. That's our recommendation, but the city council could differentiate that if you wish. And then, as I said, we recommend to reevaluate the entire ordinance and its components in three years and report back to the city council and watch its performance so you can make any changes if you'd like in the future. I'm not going to go through all the rest of the presentation. There is one thing that we are taking away, and I just wanted to emphasize this. And one is that there is a project that's happening by an affordable housing developer where the developer is asking another market-rate housing developer to direct their housing, inclusionary housing funds for their affordable housing development. inclusionary housing funds for their affordable housing development. And there was a request to make this part of the plan, and we recommend against it. And the reason is that, here's what we do. Earmarking in lieu, oh, this is missing some pages. When you write a check, the second you write a check, a developer writes a check in-lufy, that check no longer belongs to the developer. That check no longer belongs to the affordable housing developer. It's now a public fund. And by giving it to the affordable housing developer, you have essentially given the exclusive rights of negotiation and taken away the ability of other developers to compete for that same fund to produce affordable housing in the future. So it really, really makes, it monopolizes the access to that fund. And in addition, that particular developer will probably ask for housing assistance funds from the housing authority, which have restrictions. And those restrictions make the affordable housing sometimes unavailable to undocumented immigrants. And this is an immigrant-friendly city. We do not recommend this. We think the Affordable Housing Fund from the Inclusionary Housing Development needs to be set aside and be used by the city at its discretion to produce new affordable housing without those restrictions so even undocumented immigrants in the city can actually take advantage of those. And then any fund that we have in the Inclusionary Housing Fund will become available through a competitive process to all developers, and the city can differentiate between the ones that have strings attached to them and the ones that don't have strings attached to them. I am not going to go over the rest of these. I'm going to go to the very last slide. So our recommendation is that you adopt the proposed amended ordinance if you would like to look at alternatives. One alternative would be to allow the applicants with projects over 20 units, 21 units or more, also to pay an in-lufy. That's what we took out. But if you were to do that, we would recommend that you select a higher in-lufy for those projects, much higher to make it closer to what actually would cost us to produce a housing unit. And then, or, alternative two, which is one of the, you've got a letter supporting this proposal tonight, and that letter also requested by a developer or an organization that allow up to 50 units of projects to be allowed to pay in-lufy as opposed to produce it onsite. So this would be another alternative, that everything else remains the same, but that threshold goes to 50 from 20. And the last alternative is to make no change or do any other change that we have not considered in the past. With this, I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Hassan. I think we'll go ahead and just keep you on call in case we have some questions, either from the public or from the council. And I think we have some speakers here, and I'll ask them. We all have three minutes to speak, but if you want to speak less, please, we're going to encourage you to do that tonight. And there's some of you that may be saying the same thing, so if you want to just go ahead and defer speaking. I know we have Sessad Kovarubias up first and Julie Castañeda, both from the Kennedy Commission. Sessad, if you want to condense in yours, and you know, we completely get it and we completely understand, we're losing council members by the second here, so.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. My name is Sessad Kovarubias, Executive Director of the Kennedy Commission, an organization that advocates for policy for affordable housing development in Orange County. I want to commend the city, first of all, for going back five years or so in planning all these districts that were going to spur development. Metro East, Harbor Corridor, the Station District, First Street, all these areas were intended to create new opportunities for development. And we also know that five years ago or so, the city council made a determination and said, "We know that the market's not going to meet the needs of housing for our residents here in Santana," because they're creating a higher income to qualify for those properties, to pay more rent, to pay more for those properties when they sell them. So that's how we created the Affordable Housing Ordinance. And here we are today where we're saying, wow, we need to change the Affordable Housing Ordinance from 15% to low, very low, now to allow 10% at low, 15% at moderate. Well, let's define that. Let's make sure that it's meeting the need for affordable housing for our residents here in Santana. 60% of your population in Santana falls into the lower-income category. 80% of your population falls into the moderate, low and very low-income category. So I would say if you are going to agree with amending this ordinance, which we don't agree with it, there's various points in the letter that we submitted to you, to find those categories, make sure that the affordable housing that's going to be built onsite is going to meet the income categories that we're trying to meet. Because I assure you that right now, low is going to meet almost the same rental market that the moderate, pardon me, that the market's at today in Santana. Station District, the low-income units, the extremely low-income units filled up really quick. The very low filled up really quick. The low-income units, there was a period of time where they couldn't rent them because it's so close to market. Same thing we see on the moderate side. When you're on the homeownership side, if you don't define moderate, you also are going to fall into the same situation where moderate is the same as market in many cases in Santana because of your median income. Just really quickly, going through our recommendations, I would say that when we look at the ordinance, we want to make sure that if you are going to apply the ordinance, it be to all developments, including adaptive reuse. If they can't make it work, let them show you. Have them pay the in-lufy. We haven't seen the numbers. No one's shown us the numbers. The two meetings that we had, we didn't see any numbers or any convincing evidence that that was the case. We also want to make sure that you give opportunities on the ordinance to build the projects onsite, offsite, or allow for an in-lufy that's appropriate to meet the requirements of the ability onsite. My recommendations are in the letter that I submitted to you, but just one brief, I'll actually take Julie's comments if that's okay.
Perfect, thank you.
One other recommendation would be on the projects in the pipeline. I think we all should be paying by the same rules. We knew that the city of Santana was going to be producing opportunities, but we also wanted something in exchange for that, and that was affordability. If we're not going to get it onsite, we're going to be losing 3,000 units of housing that's going to go, that's going to be built, and we're losing sites on that, but we're not getting any affordable units. And that $5 a square foot, which we don't agree with that calculation, we would be getting significantly less money for you to produce it offsite. So the burden is now on the city. You have less resources to produce it onsite. Again, our calculation is preliminary, just that we have done with the numbers that we got from the city. If you do that calculation at $10, $5 a square foot, you will be losing over $20 million that could help you build affordable housing elsewhere. Just the other comments, I think, already have been made. The evaluation of the Affordable Housing Ordinance, we believe, should be done yearly, not every three years. I think there's ample room for improvement in the ordinance, and we want to ask the council to consider further consideration on this and not approve this tonight.
Thank you, Sessad. And you were taking Julie's minutes as well. So if I can call, is it Beda Ruiz? Beda Ruiz followed by Abel Ruiz, and if you both want to maybe condense your comments as well.
My name is Beda Ruiz. I am a youth from Santana. I'm here to request more time to analyze the community impacts on affordable housing due to the modification. I've seen many families in Santana forced to share housing.
Beda, can you, wait just one second. Can you put the timer on, Madam Clerk? Thank you.
Okay. I've seen many families in Santana forced to share housing due to house unaffordability, as well as parents having to work multiple jobs to pay for the next month's rent and provide for their families. The act of sharing your roof with multiple families makes it hard to live a comfortable life in which children can focus when doing homework. I'm here to share my experience. As many residents in Santana, I come from a low-income family. This year, a new landowner in my apartments raised the rent by 300 a month from the original price, rent. This impacted my family, especially my dad, who is the only one that provides for my family. Working in a landscaping job, most of his paycheck would go to paying the rent. Living paycheck to paycheck caused stress in my dad, resulting in looking for another place to live. In April, my dad decided to move to Oklahoma in search of another job and affordable living. And now, next week, my family and I are leaving as well. I feel that my family has been displaced from our home after living there for 20 years. I wish not to leave, but it's not a matter of wanting, but of needing. I ask the city council to take in consideration my experience, as well as many other families, and act towards affordable housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Abel Ruiz followed by Madeline Spencer.
Good evening, city council members. I come before you tonight to speak on the importance of having access to affordable housing by our low, to our low-income community residing in our city. Part of making affordable housing accessible is that as a city council, to make sure that the information on issues around housing be accessible to the families who are going to be impacted the most. So, and to guarantee the processes remain true to this tenants, which has, in the past, produced great results, such as the Sunshine Ordinance. In the past, forums have been provided whereby language on policy, like the one that's being proposed, that would otherwise be too dense for residents to digest, has been presented in a way that our community feels included. We believe that taking steps such as this, where residents feel included and where the community has a seat in the table where decisions are made, are fundamental principles of the responsible development, of responsible development, sorry. A few minutes ago, Councilwoman Martinez mentioned the importance of having vision for infrastructure. I believe this is an issue on, including the community, to have also a vision of specific engagement, which is, in the long run, is going to give the city of Santana a great empowerment for our community. For this reason, we ask that you hold the vote and consider including the community in these conversations about the policies that's being proposed and to make the proposed policy, to make sure that it has the responsible development written in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Abel. Madeline Spencer. Followed by Carlos Melendez, and I believe we'll need a translator for Mr. Melendez.
You know what? I went to the stakeholder meeting that the Planning Director, Hassan, held, and I actually was pretty impressed with one thing. I asked him, "What's your end game when you're doing this?" And he gave me a number. He said 4,000 units of new housing in the next three years in Santa Ana. When I was in the stakeholder meeting for the strategic planning sessions, that was the biggest issue that came up in the focus groups, is that there's impaction in our city. We all know that. Usually, when it comes to development and the community, we are at odds. And one of the reasons why that is, is because historically, it is planning that has actually caused the racialization of space, and it has hurt minority populations in a devastating way. In the year 2015, we are hoping that the same kind of processes are no longer in place, even though they're still embedded in the policies in this city. So one of the things that we're asking you to do is to take a look at this policy very closely. And we have a question. If there's 4,000 units to be built, how many of those are going to be affordable to the people in this city? We want a number so that we're assured that we're getting the same thing that the new developers are. And we know that the market rate is all about housing in America. But the thing is, we still live in Santa Ana, so we need to make things for this community.
Carlos Melendez. And Carlos, si quieres ser breve, te lo agradecemos.
Si voy a ser breve. Gracias por la oportunidad, señor Alcalde, miembros del Consilio, señor Gerente. Mi aparición aquí es para apoyar la posición de los compañeros que me han antecedido y pedirles de que todavía no estamos preparados para digerir toda la información que nos ha dado el señor jefe de planificación. Yo creo que de lo que él nos habló muy pocos hemos entendido alguna parte. Y como es una decisión trascendental para la comunidad de Santana, nosotros como seis estamos pidiendo de que no se tome ninguna decisión todavía, sino que nos dan tiempo para poder analizarla y presentar nuestra posición a ustedes para que sea tomada en cuenta. Lo otro que quiero mencionar es que este, el señor jefe de planificación dijo que se había llamado a la comunidad para discutir lo que ya él ya dijo que se discutió y los compromisos que él dice que se han tomado. Y en mi conocimiento, no he sabido de que haya invitado a alguien excepto la Comisión Kennedy. ¿Verdad? Entonces yo creo que la comunidad de Santana está compuesta por más personas que la Comisión Kennedy. Entonces yo creo que debe ser inclusiva para todas las personas que vemos aquí. Este es un proyecto grande, de gran trascendencia, como repito, quizás es el proyecto más grande en vivienda que se va a hacer en la historia de la ciudad y no puede ser tratado a la ligera. Yo creo que debemos ser coherentes cuando decimos que trabajamos para la comunidad, pero debe ser con la comunidad, no trabajar para la comunidad sin la comunidad. Gracias.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to support what my colleagues have said. We are not ready to, for you to vote. We have not digested this information. I think from everybody who's here, only a few understand what's really going on. We need, this is a very transcendental decision, and we are not ready for you to decide yet. We need time to analyze our position and to present to you our proposal. And the chief of planning said that the community was involved, but from the people, from what I know, we were not invited. No one was invited except the Kennedy Commission, and Santa Ana is much more than just the Kennedy Commission. So this is a huge project, perhaps the biggest project of this kind in the city's history, and this cannot be taken lightly. If you say you work with the community, you need to work with the community.
Thank you, Carlos. Tad Springer followed by Jose Hadnandez.
My name is Tad Springer. I come here tonight to speak about the Housing Opportunity Ordinance and the hard work that the staff has put in on it. I want to speak to the adaptive reuse. An adaptive reuse is about preserving the historic and architectural elements that this great city has. I can tell you that it is not economically viable to have an inclusionary element within that, excuse me. And I know that the city needs housing stock. I understand that. And I think that the affordability element within the city is viable and will work on Hassan's hard work that he's done. The one thing that I want to conclude with, because I'll make this really quick, but if you look at all the adaptive reuse ordinances within all the different cities that you go into downtown LA, Long Beach, if you go into Pasadena, none of them have an inclusionary housing ordinance or within that adaptive reuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Tad, for being brief. And Jose Hadnandez, followed by Victor Bayan.
I just want to say that, you know, it's kind of a lot to ask for folks to be brief when they've been waiting patiently, especially when we take so much time to honor disgraced ex-council members for, I don't know what, but, so, with that. Secondly, I would like, before I get started in this, I'd like to say that I still want some leadership from the council on trying to get rid of this wanding. We don't need it. We were safe before. We were safe after. There was an FTP hat, and it's gone. It's, I know it was scary, but it's away in the closet, and nobody has to worry about that, so. So this letter is to communicate that El Centro Cultural de México is great concern over the modifications of the inclusionary housing ordinance and the lack of public participation in these changes. El Centro has been working on issues of gentrification and displacement in the city of Santana for about 10 years. We worked with many families in helping create community spaces for art, culture, and community leadership. We've been able to talk to many residents, youth, adults, and families. And most recently, we organized a renters' rights training where we got to listen to many stories. many stories, not only about poor housing conditions, but the high rate of housing insecurities that exist in Santana. These stories are far too common, and if you guys were there, you would see the pain and suffering of mothers saying that they can't find housing in this city, and they're desperate and they don't know what to do, and, you know, they're left to their own devices. Policy in recent decades, whether implemented by the government, the corporate sector, or some combination of the two, has contributed to a loss of housing for low-income families. What is also a shame are the discourses that both government and the private sector use to defend these policies, either for the deconcentration of property, investment rehabilitation, revitalization, or even sometimes the same need for affordability. It's used to promote development that has led to the displacement of members of our community, as enormous amounts of investments come into our cities, their interest in maximizing profits undermine our interest in long-term neighborhood stability. We want policies that allow us to strengthen the bonds we build with each other in our communities, which help us to survive in the face of resource scarcity, economic hardship, environmental degradation, and political marginalization. We assert our right to stay in the communities that we have built and take part in their future. We refuse to be displaced. And to this end, we call for an end to profit-driven development that produces housing our communities cannot afford. The changes in this ordinance represent the lack of city's commitment to housing for Santana's residents, the failure to include the community shaping in these, in these significant policies. We call for more time and more public participation. And lastly, there was recently a report that said, "More jobs, less opportunity." As we get jobs, well, we, that don't pay well, we're left in this place where we don't, can't afford housing.
Victor Bayan, followed by Nancy Alcala.
Hello again. There were two issues that brought me here tonight, so, haven't been here for a while, but a lot of good stuff happening.
And I know this is going to be your brief comments.
Yes, my brief comments. I want to say regarding this proposed change to the Housing Opportunity Ordinance is that it's called the Housing Opportunity Ordinance for a reason, and it was enacted for a reason, and that homeownership is really the cornerstone of the American dream. And I think that with the housing costs that we're seeing in Orange County in California and Santa Ana, several speakers have spoken to it, it's not going down. It's not going down in any near future. And the importance of this ordinance to working families is so critical. People on the margin, people struggling, working two or three jobs, people who bought houses 30 years ago, they're renting them out to three families anyways. They're making their money. But for the people, if we think of our own parents and why we're standing here today with the opportunities that we have, owning a home was critical, you know? And if we remove that from this, from this ordinance, from these requirements, or lessen it, then we severely impact the lives and future of this community. And I, and I'm just hearing about this also recently, so I agree that there needs to be more time and maybe another stakeholder meeting with people who were not at the table at the previous meetings. I also want to talk about the removal of adaptive reuse from the ordinance, because adaptive reuse is critical for arts development, for the development of an arts economy, and we've been talking about that for years. As the city is moving in to develop an arts master plan, if we remove adaptive reuse from the affordable housing, from this HOO, then we severely hamstring and limit the kind of development we can attract to the city. And I would say there's no rush on this, so I would, instead of changing it now and revisiting it in three years, I would say, do the arts master plan, work on this for another three years, and then consider changing it, because it does work and it does function and it does help people today. I see a lot of people who are in the room that I haven't seen before, who are wearing very nice suits, and I'm assuming those are developers. So, to them, I would like to say, to really understand why this was put in place, the benefits of it, really rethink the kind of buildings they can build, the kind of development they can create and attract by considering arts economy projects, by considering new technology projects, by considering spaces where people can afford to live and create new ideas, generate new wealth. And also, to the council, I ask that you safeguard the Housing Opportunity Ordinance for working families and to keep it for adaptive reuse and instead of revisiting in three years. And to the, to the new planning director, I'd like to reach out and talk to him about some ideas we've been talking about with you all, about the arts and the development and the possibility for all these other areas where adaptive reuse is critical.
Thank you, Victor. Nancy Alcala, who's our last speaker.
Hello again, city council. I'm speaking on the Housing Opportunity Ordinance modification. I am asking for the modification to be postponed, as there are many implications it will cause for our residents, affordable housing, stock and funds. We need a commitment to affordable housing that will meet the community's needs. Action on the modification impacts affordability, causing residents to work two, that they are already working two or more jobs, or having people live with multiple families to make housing affordable. Residents are having to put up with abuse, exploitation, and retaliation from managers. The most impactful is the displacement of families. I have lived in Santa Ana for 17 years. In 2012, my family was displaced in twin neighborhood where shootings, shootings happen on a weekly or daily basis, as a result of the development on Lacey and Minter. The implications of this worries me. In order for us to currently afford a living, my parents have to work two or more jobs. My, my brother has stopped going to college in order to help my parents, and my sister is getting ready to attend college, and that also worries me, as well as people who will be displaced due to this. I don't wish the results of this development on anybody, and I wish more time to further analyze and be included in this process. Thank you.
And seeing no other members of the public wishing to speak, I'll close the hearing. And Madam Clerk, have we received any additional communications in writing that we haven't considered and entered in the record?
No, I have not.
Thank you. And I'll bring it back to council, and I'm not sure if the councilwoman is still with us. I know, I saw her step out, but if she's in the back room, maybe she wants to come back in. If not, Councilman Dina Hedo, are you still with us?
Yes.
All right. Thanks for hanging in there. We promise we'll, we'll get through this last one. If, my colleagues will just indulge me for a second. I wanted to speak on this and see if I could condemn some of the concerns. I think the public misunderstands the, this matter. This is not meant to dilute or reduce the number of affordable units, if anything. What we're trying to do is provide some clarity, provide some predictability to this, so more units will be developed. We want to make it easier for folks to develop units on site. If you look at studies, when you have affordable units in the same development as market rate units, people tend to have better experiences. And what we were seeing is a lot of affordable units that were created sort of in their own projects. And if you go to LA and you look at some of the projects that were built there that were all affordable, they're not very nice. Over time, they start decaying. But what we see is mixed income developments tend to make a better community, because you have people who are, who can afford those units in our market rate, and you have others who are low-income and can't afford that, and are willing to go ahead and, and live and, and, you know, experience each other, and I think help each other more than anything. So, this is an effort to try to create more affordable units within market rate developments. More than anything, just create more units. And what we've heard from our development community is that they just can't figure out what our ordinance says and what it requires, and when they come to the city, they are confused, they're baffled, they go to other cities, and it's much easier to understand, you know, per unit, this is what you have to spend, or per square foot, this is what the cost is. And it just makes things more easy, more easy for them to go ahead and invest and do a pro forma and create more housing. What we need is more housing. We have a lot of housing that's in decay. We have a lot of housing that's, you know, falling apart. We have multiple families living in, in the same unit. It makes it very difficult. We're sensitive to that, because we all grew up in the same situation that all of you are describing, so nobody is ignoring that fact. If anything, what we did through the meetings that we had with staff is to direct them to amend this, so it would be much more sensitive to those folks who couldn't afford the units. We know that the, the Santa Ana median household income, according to the US Census, is 53,000. So, we know that we have a very low median income housing compared to the rest of the county. We know that we have to be extra sensitive. This ordinance didn't even exist five years ago. The reason why this council adopted it is because it had never been adopted before. Nobody had ever addressed the affordability concern. So, for people to come in and say, "You're not doing anything, or you're trying to harm the community," and I know Sessad from the Kennedy Commission was right there when we adopted it for the first time five years ago. And we had conversations, and we said, "This is what our intent is, to make a real strong policy statement, that we want to make sure that there is dignified housing, that there's affordable housing, and there's more housing development." How do you do that? People can't just create affordable housing out of nothing. There has to be some investment, both from the development community, from the market rate community, from, from state government, federal funds, and so that's how you create it. You have to be able to do it from, from something, and you have to use these funds. What I would suggest, Mr. Director, is that we amend in a couple of ways. And the in-lufi of $5 per square foot, relative to what you described in Pasadena, $15 was their low end. So, I think $5 is extremely, extremely low. Our land is already very inexpensive here in the city. I think that a developer, a market rate developer, would, shouldn't have any problem paying $15 at least a square foot here in the city. And the reason why I think a better rate, a more adjusted higher rate like that is better, because then you create a larger pool of funds that we could use to leverage to create developments in areas that the market may not be addressing. So, that would be the first amendment or change I'd make to the amended item. The second one is that I know that we're trying to address homeownership, and that's very important. The problem is, is that if you, the way moderate income is defined for homeownership, it's at 110% area median income, and that's just a very high level right now. If you look at the, what that means in real numbers, 100%, is 93,000 for a family of four. Very few people are going to be able to, you know, at least in our city, because I just described what the median income was of 53,000. So, if we could come back and look at going from, redefining moderate to go to 80% AMI versus 110% AMI, what it does is it reduces it to folks who are right between 56,000 and 70,000, roughly. That's, you know, still something that's very difficult, but at least they'll be eligible for financing. At least they'll be eligible to, to make this work, and they're still on the lower end of the spectrum, and that's who we're trying to help. My other comment was, when developers pay these in-lufis, I'd like to not have them have a dispositive decision on where these funds should be directed, but if they could comment, there has to be a public benefit, there has to be a public use to these funds. They become public, and we can, you know, do a request for proposal for those, so developments can be created. But I'd like to have the developer have an opportunity to comment and opine. Again, work with staff and say, "Look, there's a real good project in this area of town that I've identified, and I'm working with a nonprofit developer to develop affordable units. We'd like to be able to see some of our funds or all of our funds go there." Again, shouldn't be dispositive, but I think they have a role in the decision-making of where those, where the fees that they pay should go. Finally, and this is a question for the, for our assistant city attorney, when we exempt those pipeline projects and when we exempt projects that have already been adopted, isn't that modifying the development agreement? Isn't that modifying the term sheet, because we're now exempting them from, is it this ordinance and its terms and clauses, or are they, are we exempting them and making them just as they were, as they were drafted before? In other words, leaving them unchanged? So, that's my, I guess, my confusion on this.
I think I need a little...
Sure, sure.
If I may answer that question from the side, the way that the ordinance, the draft ordinance is written, does not automatically exempt the pipeline projects, however, it gives them the opportunity to request for the in-lufi to be the same as the in-lufi that the council would adopt with the modified ordinance. And the, the projects that were approved prior to the inclusionary, the original ordinance already...
And that's just one, you said, right?
There's only one, and that one does not have any agreement to be exempted from. The only thing that we're changing is that the original ordinance clawed back that one project and subjected it to the inclusionary housing requirement. We're saying you can let that one go. There is no agreement to be exempted. But the other ones would have to request a new agreement that allows them the new in-lufi.
Got it. Thank you. And so, with that, I'm fine with those exemptions. I know that there was some discussion about the exemptions on the adaptive reuse. If you look at, you know, what historic structures and commercial structures that are being changed over and made residential, it's a really tricky way of doing things. Those are things that, you know, developers of residential to residential, you're just, you're just, you're doing either new construction, or you're modifying existing residential to affordable units. There's not that much of a, of an economic impact, but adapting and changing the use of an existing commercial to a residential and a historic, you know, it's just crazy, because you have to go through a lot of changes that you wouldn't have to do in a residential to residential change in adaptive reuse and rehab. So, I would be supportive of that exemption as well. We don't want to leave money on the table, but we also want those old buildings that are historic to be preserved, to be rehabbed, and made available for new housing stock. That's the whole objective here, is to create more housing. And if we can use those second, third, fourth stories that are vacant right now, nobody's in them, why can't we encourage our development community to take those, rehab them, adapt them, so artists, veterans, low-income families can live there? There is absolutely nothing wrong with that. I think there, if we can encourage that, that's a net gain for us. So, with those changes, I will make a motion to adopt as amended and move along.
Yeah, just for clarification.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion in a second from Councilman Dina Hedo.
Yeah, and I just want clarification on the in-lufis, once they become public funds. Who's going to have a say with your amendment as to what we use them for, or what projects?
Well, they're, as I understand, they're going to be required to be used for affordable developments, right? And so, we would now pool those funds together, and they get procured to applicants who are going to come in and say, "We want to develop these affordable," just as we do now, but it's just going to be a larger pool, because now we're going to be doing it, we're going to have fees at a higher increment that has to be paid.
Correct. Thank you. And one more question for Hassan, with respect to the rehabilitation target areas. What are some of the, how are we mitigating some of the effects of displacement?
In the ordinance, we have put language that the displacement of existing tenants will be 100% responsibility. The cost and the payoff of those who are being displaced will be the responsibility of the developer, and it'll be consistent with state law and the same, and then the first right of refusal and other things that the state law already sets forth for when you convert condominiums to ownership apartments. It's the same process, and the cost of displacement is borne by the developer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Reyna.
Sorry, I didn't mean to let you go back to your seat. I have just another point of clarification. So, the one that's in the, currently in the pipeline right now doesn't necessarily qualify for, for, to ask for an adjustment, correct?
Well, if the proposed ordinance with the adjustment that the mayor pro temp requested for the in-lufi, they would be still, however, instead of $5 per square foot, they'd be, if this was adopted, would be required to pay $15 per square foot. So, that would be the opportunity. And I don't think any of the existing projects comes near that amount, quite frankly, so. So, this would be higher than whatever exists right now.
And so, the other projects that have already started the process, wherever they are at within that system, they'll have an option of whether they're going to stay with the original agreement that we had, or this particular one that we may end up passing?
There are two, two groups of the pipeline projects. Ones that have already made some arrangements, that have negotiated and come to agreement with the city. with the city with a particular in-lufi agreement. Those projects will have the option of considering $15 per square foot and come and renew and ask for a new agreement. And then there are the projects that have not even started discussing the affordable housing plan. Those ones will be automatically subject to this new housing plan or, because as of this time, the opportunity to negotiate will go away if this gets adopted.
Thank you. Councilman Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Mr. Hagani. I think I might have needed your back at the mic.
Just stay up here, Hassan. I don't think you should go anywhere.
I think I'll stay here until Mayor Protem tells me to sit down.
So, going back to the, to the projects that are in the pipeline, you mentioned there are two categories, which have already worked out some type of agreement or there's been some calculation already, right? I'm kind of wanting to inquire about those that have not yet gone through the process of actually, and I don't know how many that might be, and there's a whole application process, right, from submitting to going through the reviews and such. But I'm curious about those who have submitted that have potentially used a formula that we have had in place, even though maybe somewhat nebulous, but still, you know, something that where there was some type of general guideline. And then perhaps have negotiated, they're tied up a property, have something, or have tied up or have acquired something with a certain formula in mind, and midstream, you know, potentially, we approve something that shifts that, their requirement. You know, will that, I'm just kind of wrestling with how that might impact, you know, those projects that, because ultimately, when somebody, I'm putting myself in the place of a developer, if I'm acquiring a property, I, part of what we're trying to do today is to make it, create predictability. However, some have moved forward potentially, and that's my question to you, have some potentially moved forward with the idea that even though it's not completely predictable, but they have some type of formula they may have used, and now are we going to potentially be throwing a curveball that will throw things off?
I think there, well, if they have already started the project, but they have not started any kind of negotiation for their affordable housing plan in terms of paying an in-lufi, then the assumption is that, as the existing ordinance says, that they're, they understand the ordinance first and foremost, even now, requires them to produce the affordable housing plan onsite. So, knowing that, that's where they need to start from, and then if they want to negotiate down, they have a pathway to do. We can easily check and see if any of them has, those developers who have an application but have not started any negotiation for the affordable housing plan, those ones clearly do not really fall in the middle of any category because, as it is, they're required to produce the housing plan. However, if that would make the council more comfortable, we can actually identify the very specific projects where there is an application, but no housing plan negotiation has started, and reach out to them and give you an idea of what the situation is, along with a second reading, and then propose some options for you to consider.
That would be helpful. Just, we wouldn't, part of what we're trying to do is get projects completed, get both market rate and affordable units built. So, for the second reading, if you can do some of that research.
Or alternatively, the City Council could consider giving those projects the option of either using the existing formula or using the new flat rate, which I think would probably be the easiest thing to do, to give that option in the ordinance, that those pipeline projects can opt either way.
That would probably be the clearest and most predictable way to go ahead.
And would not require kind of second-guessing anything.
Right. So, that would be a recommendation for the maker of the motion to consider.
I'll accept that friendly amendment to my motion.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, go over the four items that were added.
Please. And the maker of the second, are you good with that last amendment that was suggested by Councilman Benavides? Sal?
Yes.
Please proceed on.
So, the four amendments were, where it changed the moderate income formula definition from 110% AMI to 80% AMI, and then the in-lufi, the flat rate to be $15 per square foot. And the developer should have an opportunity to opine where the money that they pay for in-lufi should be spent, and we will have to think of a mechanism to recommend to you. And the last amendment was what was suggested by Councilman Benavides, which is to give the developers of pipeline projects the option of using the existing formula for in-lufis or using the $15 per square foot formula. And again, with the understanding that any projects over 21 will have to produce the housing, even in the existing one, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Director.
Just a follow-up question, and this might be more for Mayor Protem. With regard to the modification or incorporating an opportunity for the developer of a market-rate to opine on where the funds might be directed, it's my understanding that it really is more, still would be at the discretion of the city, but where the developer would be able to at least speak into for consideration. It might be a good project that might be, fall within our priorities, and that would help us be able to get to, again, move things along, expedite things, and direct those funds and allow a project to move forward. But is that what I'm understanding, is more just giving them a voice, if you will, but ultimately having the discretion?
That's exactly right. There are some cities that will give complete discretion to the developer. In other words, that developer who pays those fees can decide where those monies are going to be directed. So, if they have a relationship with a nonprofit developer for affordable housing, they'll say, "I want 100% of my fees to go to this project." And what we thought, after discussions with the city manager and the director of planning, we thought, "Well, these monies, once they pay those fees, become public funds." They should have an opportunity to opine and comment, and it may become a factor on where those monies ultimately go, but it shouldn't be dispositive or shouldn't be something that triggers exactly where they go. So, I hope that's the way we understood.
I understand. Thanks for clarification.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, and before Councilman Tina Hedo falls asleep on us in Florida, and by the way, we lost Councilwoman Martinez. She wasn't feeling well, so she's no longer here either. So, Sal, hang in there. We need you. So, just for this one last thing. So, we have a motion and a second with the amendments that were addressed by the planning director. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll on this vote?
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Tina Harrow.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sarmiento.
Yes.
Councilmember Benavides.
Aye.
Councilmember Reyna.
Aye.
Councilmember Amesca.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries five zero, yeah, that's five zero with Mayor Pulido absent and Councilwoman Martinez absent. Sal, you can go to bed now. Thank you for hanging in there.
No, thank you guys, and I'll be with you shortly.
Great.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Be well, be well.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, moving along to the consent calendar items. Are there any items that council members would like to pull from the consent calendar?
Mayor Protem, I just want to clarify, in 22F, we're continuing that item. Is that correct, at staff's recommendation?
That's correct. At staff's request, we're going to pull that matter. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Agenda item 22F has been continued at the request of the police chief.
Got it. We're going to continue it to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
To the September 1st council meeting.
September 1st. Got it.
September 1st.
Any other items?
25A, I'll go ahead and pull to address some of the questions that were brought up previously.
25A. Seeing no further items, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the balance of that. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Is there a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries with Councilmember Tina Hedo, Mayor Pulido, and Councilwoman Martinez absent. 25A.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember?
Mayor Protem. So, what we have here is the Arts and Culture Artist Grant Program that we approved several months ago. It's great to be able to see this moving along quite quickly. Our Arts and Culture Commission has been working diligently. We have a number of local artist groups that will be, continue to move the arts movement within our city. But we did have a couple of questions, one primarily that was presented earlier with regard to, I think, the applicant that had presented, submitted for arts and crafts programs for one year, and in the information that council received, it's indicating that it's a two-year commitment. So, just that and any other clarification, just if you can speak to that, Ms. Reinders, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Benavides. On that one, the budget that the artist submitted was about half of the grant amount, which was $5,000. They submitted 2,500. Extending the program was a way to work with them to kind of get the budget to a place that, you know, met the grant and, you know, they ranked well, and we wanted to work with them. We can work with them to make it a one-year program if that's your desire and adjust the budget accordingly.
Okay, so, it's, so there wasn't a typo or anything? This was something that was presented by staff? I'll go ahead and, did you, you did not end up having an opportunity to discuss or work something out with them?
I believe one of my staff person called and discussed it with them. You know, it's like kind of once everyone submits a budget to go back and, you know, we're trying to keep it on a very fair playing field.
I'm going to go ahead and make the motion as presented by staff and give you discretion to go back. I just was wanting to get, gain clarification there, and if you can work something out, if that makes sense. Great.
We'll make it work.
Okay.
We'll make it, and we'll find the additional money.
Okay.
For the most part, my understanding is there's two forms of grants, complicated, but a $5,000 and a $10,000, and that's pretty much.
That's correct.
Not like $325.
No, we're, yes, we want good projects. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'm moving ahead.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries with Mayor Pulido, Councilwoman Tina Hedo, and Councilwoman Martinez absent. Madam Clerk, I realized, and you brought this to my attention, so thank you. Item numbers 20A, 20B, and 20C were all appropriation items that needed a minimum five-member vote, and we only have four members here on the council. I knew we should have kept Sal awake for a few minutes longer. It could have helped. Can we go ahead and revisit those and recall those?
Yes, we'll continue those items to the September 1st council meeting if we can take a vote on those items for continuance.
Okay, can I do those in a bundle?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'm going to recall Agenda Items 20A, 20B, 20C to continue those to the September 1st meeting. Can I have a motion for that?
Move that ahead.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries with Mayor Pulido, Councilwoman Tina Hedo, and Councilwoman Martinez absent. Moving along to the regular business items, Agenda Item 50A. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries with Mayor Pulido, Councilwoman Tina Hedo, and Councilwoman Martinez absent. Moving along to Item 55A, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries with Mayor Pulido, Councilwoman Tina Hedo, and Councilwoman Martinez absent. Do I have to keep on repeating that, Madam Clerk? It says that in the thing.
It's noted for the record.
Why don't we just do that as an implicit for the rest of the, for the rest of the meeting? 55B, I'll entertain a motion.
I want to hear you keep saying.
Maybe that'll save a few seconds.
I'll move the item.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 55C.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, moving along to 55D. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. 55E. I'll entertain a motion on this.
I'll move the item.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 55F.
55F also has an appropriation adjustment, so we need to continue that item.
So, I'll entertain a motion to continue that matter to September 1st.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. 65A.
Move the item.
I'll second that motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. We've already taken 75B out of order, and 75C was a request by Mayor Pulido to continue this matter. He wanted to have an opportunity to address this, so we'll all move the item to September 1st, if there's a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. So, we're now to 75D, which is a public hearing, so we'll all go ahead and open the public hearing to amend Chapters 8 and 14 of the Santa Ana Municipal Code and required amendments regarding the California Building Code. Do we have a presentation from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, we do. Building code. Yeah, you're going to make things better for us. Go for it.
This is a building code amendment. We have, we discovered that here in Orange County and in Santa Ana, we have a restriction in the building code that says that anything over 55 feet is considered a high-rise development. High-rise development, if you're familiar with construction, is a lot more costly than wood frame structures. However, the building, the California Building Code allows up to 75 feet of buildings to be constructed with wood frame structure, which is considerably higher, 20 feet higher, which allows six-story buildings with rooftop amenities. This already puts Santa Ana and the rest of Orange County, frankly, at a disadvantage compared to the rest of California because developers stop at 55 feet. With this amendment, we lift that additional restriction. We will become consistent with state building code, and we allow up to 75 feet of construction with wood frame structure, which allows us to add housing in additional height at a lower cost. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Director. I don't see any, do we have any requests to speak?
I have not received any.
Great. And have we received any written communication that hasn't been entered in the record, Madam Clerk?
None received.
Okay, let me go ahead and bring, close the hearing and bring it back to the council. Councilman Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. One question for staff. This, this item, this issue, and bringing our own standards to compliance or at the level of the state, how did this come about?
It actually came about with me looking at some of the projects that were being considered, especially in areas where we don't have the height restriction of 55, and I noticed that the projects were actually staying under 55, where we could really accommodate taller buildings. And I asked staff, and staff said, "Oh, this is an old amendment that the fire department asked all of the cities to adopt several years ago," and we did. And the reason at the time was for fire. And then I noticed, because of my previous positions, that we are missing out on a lot of development activities in Santa Ana with that one little thing in the code. So, that's how I came up about starting it.
So, you presented this.
Hassan, could you emphasize your coordination with the fire department?
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Yes, and the city manager asked me to speak with our fire department, and I spoke with the person in charge of the code and collaborated with them. And the fire department said that they're actually thinking of abandoning this restriction themselves, so they had no opposition to this.
Mr. City Manager, I want to commend you on a good hire here. Hassan, thank you for bringing this forth. I agree that, Ben, as we've been looking at different projects, including Third and Broadway, one of these I've been mentioning, can we go any higher? Can we go any higher? There's just, not only does it allow for additional, probably at least one floor of development, maybe a couple, it provides a little bit, you know, the amenities, potential rooftop, more housing units or retail, whatever it is that we're looking at or commercially, just allows also for just the economics maybe to work better on certain projects. So, the opportunities that this will open up, I think, is a great thing. So, I will, with much eagerness, be making, moving this item. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Great, thank you. I also agree, is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have, do we have any further questions?
No.
Okay, seeing no further questions from the council, I heard a very low second, but nonetheless, it's a second. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, 75E, I'll entertain a, well, do we have, this is the last public hearing, right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, this is a, I'll open the public hearing to consider adopting penalties for non-compliance with water conservation targets during Phase Two of the water shortage period. Do we have a presentation from staff? Nabil?
Very shortly.
I've known you for a while, you can be very brief and I know you're gonna do it tonight.
I'll make it concise. Sure. This is really a continuation of the Phase Two adoption of the water supply shortage that was done on June 2nd and we are proposing to implement a penalty of $4.65 per unit for those water accounts that exceeds the shortage requirement. I'm trying to find out.
I was gonna say if that was, that was it.
That was it.
Okay, well, that works.
Basically.
That works for me. I think we've seen this before, so. Great, if there's nothing further from staff, we don't need the visuals, it's okay, we got it, we saw it before. Let me go ahead and, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak from the?
No, I have not received any.
And we haven't received any written communication from anybody that hasn't been entered into the record?
None received.
Great. I'll go ahead and close the hearing pursuant to that and bring it back to the council. Any questions from the council?
No.
Comments?
Absolutely.
Councilmember?
Just wanna share some great news with the rest of the city of Santa Ana. For the month of June, Santa Ana actually met its requirements, so as far as conserving water, so will continue to do another good work. So thank you everybody for conserving.
Great, is that a motion, councilmember?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. We are now, we are, I will now recess the city council meeting and convene the Housing Authority and entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar items one through three.
Motion.
So move.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, moving along to the business calendar.
It was noted in the agenda. Oh, actually, councilmember, yes, Martinez and Tina Haro.
Making a motion to excuse those who missed.
Is that a motion to excuse Councilmember Martinez?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to excuse Councilmember Martinez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously, moving along to the business calendar. Can we take those both together?
Yes.
Great. Calendar items four and five from the Housing Authority, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And I think we're done with the calendar items. Do we have any requests to speak?
None.
No public comments?
None received.
Great, so that means, let me reconvene the city council and adjourn the Housing Authority meeting and I understand from the city manager, this was a request to cover the general plan update and it was primarily brought by Councilwoman Martinez. Her not being here, why don't we just go ahead and put it over till when she feels better and joins us again? So if the council doesn't mind, and I'm sure they won't, we'll go ahead and put that one over. And do we have any public comments? Great, thank you. Michael Klubikian and Ilya and Madeline. Michael, you're up.
Mayor Protem, Honorable Counsel and special guest in Florida, if he's still around. Ilya just lost conservatorship of his son. That's not a good sign, I'm telling you. There is, all our moms said it, be sure your sins will find you out. And I'm here to tell you the unholy alliance that the Board of Supervisors has with the district attorney who ripped him, Ilya's autistic son from his home, the lack of oversight with the Board of Supervisors with their own district attorney is why it's culminated. And this is a fruit of that unholy alliance. And when you have molten metal coming out of a building, it implodes. And the last time we saw that, 110, you know, story building became a footprint within hours. And I'm here to tell you, when you've got high-ranking officials, district attorney, board of supervisors, CEO, county council engaging in unholy alliances with the judges and guardian ad litem and public defenders, that's not a recipe for anything but implosion. I'll give you an example. They've got, since the bankruptcy, they've had four agencies outgrowth and that's the internal auditor, performance auditor, audit oversight and Office of Independent Review. And of those four, that stool of four, the Attorney General has poked his head under the hood saying, gee, many willikers, let's look at this Office of Independent Review a little closer because of the lack of oversight. The State Assemblyman has now looked at the internal auditor function, the performance auditor, saying that, you know what? The California Government Code says the auditor controller handles the safekeeping of financial records. You don't have two bosses, you don't have two captains of the ship. You get shenanigans if you have that kind of stuff. Where you don't have defined titles, that's when you get shenanigans. They slam dunked a bill on a budget, it's in the subcommittee or wherever it is being voted on, and the Board of Supervisors are playing, trying to piece Humpty Dumpty back together. Humpty Dumpty doesn't get all the kings mint, they couldn't put them back together again. But to show you how shameless the Board of Supervisors are, they're reassembling this firewall that's been obliterated. These four agencies I just noted, the performance auditor, and they're saying, oh gee, we're just gonna put them now into auditor controller. I'm here to tell you that you are one of 34 cities and you're gonna suffer the consequences of these shenanigans that's been going on across the pond. I've got 100 criminal complaints against county council. Go figure, he's no longer, he's got an apple on the roadmap. I got the complaints against the CEO. He's been there for 30 years, go figure, he rode off into the sunset. So this is what they do, they kick the can and the next guy just denies, denies. And you reap what you sow. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Michael.
And your respect for the Ralph Brown.
Thank you. Ilya, you're up, followed by Madeline Spencer, who's our last speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Vincent Sarmiento and respectful Santa Ana council members. My name is Ilya Ceglin. In my culture, it's an obligation to help and assist the weakest and weakest as disabled. And the same in my culture, it's obligation to uncover the evil. And the evil, it's Regional Center and DDS. This is a enormous financial proportion fraud in billion dollars. When you will listen, when Regional Center tell, we are here to assist, it's mean they are here to stall, to stall the finances, funding for disabled and give them nothing, only drugs that they could just live for short time and recycle them. Yesterday was, I would say, kangaroo court that decided with Judge Kim Hubbard that my conservatorship from my son was removed by cheating and tricks. I don't have time to tell you in details. But now today, my son in the hospital and I see very respectful and gentle Chief of Police Carlos Rojas. And I need protection because we today could not even come to the hospital to visit my son. My wife came to the hospital and she was pushed and threatened to call to police. What did we do? Violation. I think that the Chief of Police has to assist us and help because they are law enforcement. I'm sorry, I don't have more time, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ilya. And if you do need the assistance of any of our officers, please request that of them. Madeline, you're our last speaker. No pressure.
You guys missed a meeting last time, so there's a lot of things. This is actually about the event ordinance that was supposed to pass, so you have, we just noticed in the Clean and Safe Program document that there was supposed to be a committee that was formed in 2013 that was an event committee and it was supposed to have PD, a county development person, two people from Downtown Inc. and two people from the other bid group, which is SABC. And right now, there's a lot of sponsorship of events that goes on from those groups. We also see that the city is now gaining this funding for sponsorship of community, for community events. Parks and Recs has taken over events, which would have caused you guys to have to like mark out this contract, the Clean and Safe Program contract, like, because it needs an inline amendment made to that contract where it talks about events. And you guys had tonight 25E for $44,000 for him to contract out the Fiesta Espatrias and then you have 55C, which is this special event sponsorship policy. And then you have, in the parking plan, you also talk about events. So the question that we have is that there's like, with the whole events funding, whether it's sponsorship of events or funding for events, it seems like there's a real duplication of where funding would be for these. And it would be really nice to be able to have an event ordinance that pulled together all of the different areas that are working on events so that it can be more streamlined. And we've been asking for sort of an integration of those events. So that's specifically what I'm, I'm just asking, if you guys can take a look at all these different areas, so you're not duplicating the funding streams for events and you pull them together to integrate.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, I think you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and member of city council. We already talked about the drought reduction target, so I just wanna say thank you and we appreciate everybody's leadership on that. Just gonna talk about the Plaza 5K, I know Councilwoman Raina's gonna talk about that. I do want people to know that I'll be walking it again this year. But really important today, we had a national night out at Jerome Park from 4:00 to 7:00. It's a great family event. It was led by a police department and I'm really excited because they had a traffic safety fair. We had a lot of concerns about pedestrian accidents and vehicle and bicycle accidents and they gave out free helmets, they had games and bicycle safety checks. So I want to thank our police department for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'll bring it back to the council for comments. Councilwoman Maswana?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'd like to start off by thanking Hassan for taking on this tremendous task. I'm so happy that we have you on board, so your first, good job, thumbs up. Also, I'd like to thank all the businesses and residents for exceeding the city's 12% water reduction target in both May and June. And I also want to thank staff for helping with that implementation policy. I know you guys played a big role in that and helping us achieve that, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Raina?
Great, as always, be water wise. We live in a desert. I know it doesn't look like it because that's how much water we consume, but as you can hear from the numbers that came back from the state, we are exceeding our numbers, so definitely kudos to us and doesn't mean to let up, means to continue to doing the hard work that we're doing. And so I definitely appreciate all the work that our neighbors are doing on that end, so thank you so very much. Getting ready for a great field trip, we're gonna be taking about 80-some students from Santa Ana to Catalina for an entire week. Most of our students have never been on a boat. Unfortunately, a lot of them never see the ocean and they're gonna be blown away when they see a buffalo, because they never see those. So we're really anxious to get on out there. The families are excited as well as the students, so looking forward to that. So I'm taking a week off of work to volunteer for, say, five days for a whole bunch of students. Glutton for punishment. 5K is coming up. Last year, we had over 750 people registered and participate. As of today, we have over 600 registered, so I'm gonna encourage everyone to get out there and to register. It's absolutely free. It's a family-oriented destination event. The entire family can participate, whether it's a three-year-old in a stroller, whether it's an 80-year-old in a walker. It's 3.2 miles, we're able to do, I'll walk with you, come hang out with us. Please register. I'm shooting for 1,500 people. Out of a city of 350,000, almost 500,000, I'm sure we can get at least 15, 2,000 people out there, so please register. We got about 24 days left, so please do so. Talking about family-oriented destinations, I should've known this before, but I didn't, but the Regency Theater on Sunflower, every Wednesday has a throwback of classic films and Raging Bull is this week's, so I encourage families out there, get away from Netflix for a second and spend some quality time and definitely shop in Santa Ana, because it benefits us all. And as talking about benefiting off, school's about to come back into play. Everyone's getting ready to shop for school supplies and clothing and teachers are eagerly awaiting to implement their curriculum. But please, as you do so, please shop in Santa Ana, help prepare our students the very best that they possibly can. And there is a brand new, not brand new, there is a program, online tutoring, that allows adults to tutor online after school, so as we're starting to move forward in that direction. Thing's called Lend a Hand, which is really cool, so I would encourage you to do so. Thanks so very much. You guys have a good week. I'm gonna have a blast in Catalina.
Councilman Benavides?
All right. Don't forget your life jacket there, Councilman Raina. You know, always so many great things going on in our great city. One of those, the council, I was promoting you to councilman there, city manager. The city manager referenced the national night out that took place this evening. But, you know, we, as we talked about, the housing opportunity ordinance here tonight, it is a great example of investing in our city, both in market rate and housing and development and growth, but then also having in mind that it makes sense and it's important to also invest in areas of need and whether it be housing for families of limited means, but just in general, supporting development, then also looking at some of those areas, those pockets, those areas within our city that still need some investment, some attention, some support to our young people, so doing the both ends. So it's a great example of something that we're, we not only talk about, but we're committed to here as a city and inviting those that are looking to invest in our city to also help us in being able to support, you know, growth, business growth, but also expansion and services and programs and housing to those of need. With regard to supporting our city, I want to encourage folks to shop in our city to support local economy, local jobs, every opportunity you have, whenever you're gonna go out and do a little shopping, whether it be groceries, whether it be filling up your gas tank, shopping for clothes, the back to school, as Councilman Raina mentioned. Every dollar that's spent, that's spent here in the city comes right back, portion that comes right back to our city. So I want to encourage our folks to do that. And lastly, I know we will be adjourning our meeting on behalf of two individuals that passed recently. One particular that I just wanted to mention personally, that it just unfortunately was very untimely, the passing of Gil Marrero, an individual who was not only a resident of the city, but himself invested so much in bringing a lot of what we talk about and we're seeing in the downtown, the vibrancy there, the investment, the new restaurants and we're talking about adaptive reuse. Actually, I remember some time back, he was one of the first people that pulled me aside. I was walking down having lunch in our downtown and he was, as he often did, was showcasing a lot of what is taking place in the downtown to a new, bringing in a new investor, somebody who was looking at an opportunity to buy and acquire real estate here. somebody who was looking at an opportunity to, to buy and acquire real estate here in the city. And, uh, and Gil pulled me aside and just was, was referencing how, uh, we might wanna look at the adapt, uh, the housing opportunity ordinance as it applies to adaptive reuse because he was just, uh, had, had noticed that it was something that would potentially hinder, uh, the adaptive reuse ordinance from being implemented and new projects being, being brought in. And, um, Gil just loved the city, uh, believed in the city, uh, did so much to, to promote, uh, he was one of the biggest street leaders that I knew, uh, of the city of Santa Ana, particularly as, as it came to, to investment. Uh, so my condolences to Wanda, his, 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 his wife and, and the family, and, uh, just, just, uh, just extremely grateful for, for Gil and, and, and his life and investing, uh, so much of his life and energy, uh, in, in helping develop and build our city and our downtown in particular. So just wanted to make a few, an opportunity to be with, uh, be at a celebration of life service last week, and, and, uh, just wanted to make a few personal comments there, reference to him.
Thank you, councilmember. Those were, thank you for those thoughtful comments. Um, I simply wanna mention a couple of things. I think I mentioned one earlier, and by the way, calling the city manager a councilman, I think that's a demotion, not a promotion. I don't know. We have to think about that. But, um, I did mention that it was the 25th anniversary this year of the American with Disabilities Act, and as we were celebrating the Supreme Court's decision on the, um, gay rights marriage issue, I think we can't lose sight of this very, very large piece of legislation that was intended to prevent discrimination against, uh, people with disabilities. And, um, you know, having, um, somebody in my life who, uh, who advocates on their behalf and having many family members who are disabled, um, this was landmark legislation. If you wanna talk about civil rights, there isn't anything more effective than this, making sure that there's parity in our community, that, that folks with disabilities are treated equally. So I just wanna, uh, give a nod to all those advocates who are out there fighting the good fight, um, for equity on behalf of those who are, uh, truly, truly, uh, in need of, um, of heroes and support, which is the special needs community. So thank you to all of you, and congratulations for everything you do. Um, lastly, I want to, um, give a nod to my Bolivian community. They're gonna have their Independence Day on, uh, August the 6th, which is a couple of days from now, and what's funny about the whole ADA discussion, the 25th anniversary and the Bolivian community, about 50 delegates came to the Special Olympics, which I missed because I was out of town, but, um, they came from Bolivia with many other, uh, folks from all over the world, and I hear it was a great time, but, uh, to those Bolivianos that came, uh, Feliz Dia de la Independencia, Feliz Seis de Agosto, a todos mis hermanos y paisanos Bolivianos, que viva Bolivia! And, um, I want to adjourn in memory of a couple of folks as well, and I think the councilmember, uh, spoke about one of them, and the first one is Gil Marrero, so let me just read a couple of, uh, a couple of passages about him. He passed away on July 15th, 2015, at the age of 59. Gil was born on June 4th, 1956, in Youngstown, Ohio, and graduated in 1979 from the University of Colorado at Boulder. With an economics degree, he worked for Voight Commercial Real Estate for 25 years. Gil helped establish the Santa Ana Artist Village and redevelopment of downtown. He enjoyed traveling, music, collecting art, and jamming with friends. He was an inspiration to everyone in his life and will truly be missed. Gil is survived by his wife, Wanda, mother Paula Montalvo, brother Ernest, sister Luisa, and her husband, Don Bauer, his two nieces Sasha and Sophie, and his stepdaughter Kathy. Memorial services were held on July 27th in lieu of flowers and gifts, uh, to be made, they could be made to the USC Norris Comprehensive Cancer Center in memory of Gil Marrero to support cancer research. You know, one of the stories I have about Gil is that we didn't know we see eye to eye when we spoke about, um, the downtown and its direction and its vision, but one thing I always knew about Gil, that he loved this city. He lived in the city, he owned, um, real estate in the city, he had business in the city, but he was a tireless, tireless voice for its development. So he will be missed, and I know after he was diagnosed, he continued working, and I'd see him, his voice was very weak, he had gotten very thin, he had gotten very frail, but he was doing the same thing he was doing when he was healthy, which was showing people around town. So, you know, I can't speak any higher of somebody, uh, than that to say that he cared so much about the city that he did it even when his health was failing. So Gil, to you and your family, uh, Wanda, uh, all our condolences, and, uh, please we'll keep him in our memory always. Um, Aldrick Unger is another person we're gonna be, uh, adjourning in memory of, and he was a Santa Ana resident and a former host of the Czech children's radio show Meteor, which began in 1962. He interviewed guests about science. After he signed Charter 77, he was blacklisted. He and his family moved to the United States in 1980 and moved to Orange County in 1983. What was Charter 77? It was created by anonymous authors. Charter 77 criticized the communist Czech, Czechoslovakian government for not mentioning human rights and its governing principles. The document suggested that political, civil, economic, and cultural rights be extended to all people of Czechoslovakia, and it is suggested that communists should rule not with an iron fist as they had done in the Soviet Union, but with a human face. Aldrick and his wife Ivana Unger said they were among 800 who signed Charter 77. Other reports said that there were as many as 1,900 signatures on the document. Václav Havel, who would later become president of the Czech Republic, also signed the document. The Czech government reacted harshly, taking away citizenship and income-earning abilities from the signers. Last year, the Santa Ana mayor and council recognized Aldrick Unger for his distinguished service and accomplishments within the Santa Ana community. In 1983, Mr. Unger and his family purchased their first home in Washington Square neighborhood and soon became actively involved, serving as a block representative, board member, and committee member for many neighborhood events. Among his projects, Mr. Unger hand-carved new redwood clock hands for the historic Spurgeon Clock Tower. Mr. Unger has been the subject of two books published in the last couple of years. He is survived by his wife Ivana, many friends, and many family. We extend our condolences to the Unger family. And with that, we're adjourned till September 1st. Thank you very much.